Screen sprung yet?
Sure. Sure, wait till morning.
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 Is this my cabinet?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, you're dismissed.
You're better than that.
Well, that's good.
My hands are not working this morning.
Not free?
My hands are not working this morning.
Not free?
Well, did yours work now? I might try it.
Sure, it's gonna have work.
It's not been like this, we're just gonna call me.
Okay.
I'm just gonna leave this discussion here for now.
Okay, yep.
Were we blocked, were we gonna still try to reach out to David?
Yes.
This morning?
Not blocked, that's what I said.
Okay.
Because if you have anything to the contrary, Chris, you have anything to the contrary, right? Okay. So, yeah, soon as we open, we'll try to do that. Because he had something at nine thirty, I believe.
Yes.
All right, I'm getting nine o'clock. Local meeting was pledged. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
All right, I will undertake a motion to go into executive session for attorney my privileges, matters of possible litigation of county.
So moved.
For ten minutes, commissioners, clerk, attorney, and David Cooper by phone.
Cooper.
Yep. For probable cause of insubstantial, is there any further discussion? Carried then, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed same side. Motion carried.
Can you give me time out?
Yeah.
Everybody has to...
Yeah, we're gonna have an executive session, so just real quick.
Kenny, we're having an executive session for ten minutes.
All right. I just gotta ask a question, so I can wait. I'll see if you can talk to him. I don't know what you want your job out to. All right.
All right, I will undertake a motion to go into executive session for attorney my privileges, matters of possible litigation of county.
So moved.
For ten minutes, commissioners, clerk, attorney, and David Cooper by phone.
Cooper.
Yep. For probable cause of insubstantial, is there any further discussion? Carried then, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed same side. Motion carried. Do you have any time out?
Yeah.
Everybody has to...
Yeah, we're gonna have an executive session, so just real quick.
Kenny, we're having an executive session for ten minutes.
All right. I just gotta ask a question, so I can wait. I'll see if you can talk to him. I don't know what you want your job out to. All right.
All right, I will undertake a motion to go into executive session for attorney my privileges, matters of possible litigation of county.
So moved.
For ten minutes, commissioners, clerk, attorney, and David Cooper by phone.
Cooper.
Yep. For probable cause of insubstantial, is there any further discussion? Carried then, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed same side. Motion carried. Do you have any time out?
Yeah.
Everybody has to...
Yeah, we're gonna have an executive session, so just real quick.
Kenny, we're having an executive session for ten minutes.
All right. I just gotta ask a question, so I can wait. I'll see if you can talk to him. I don't know what you want your job out to. All right.
Do you have any time out?
Yeah.
Everybody has to...
Yeah, we're gonna have an executive session, so just real quick.
Kenny, we're having an executive session for ten minutes.
All right. I just gotta ask a question, so I can wait. I'll see if you can talk to him. I don't know what you want your job out to. All right.
Do you have any time out?
Yeah.
Everybody has to... Yeah, we're gonna have an executive session, so just real quick.
Kenny, we're having an executive session for ten minutes.
All right.
I just gotta ask a question, so I can wait. I'll see if you can talk to him. I don't know what you want your job out to. All right.
Do you have any time out?
Yeah.
Everybody has to...
Yeah, we're gonna have an executive session, so just real quick.
Kenny, we're having an executive session for ten minutes.
All right. I just gotta ask a question, so I can wait. I'll see if you can talk to him. I don't know what you want your job out to. All right.
Do you have any time out?
Yeah.
Everybody has to...
Yeah, we're gonna have an executive session, so just real quick.
Kenny, we're having an executive session for ten minutes.
All right. I just gotta ask a question, so I can wait. I'll see if you can talk to him. I don't know what you want your job out to. All right.
Do you have any time out?
Yeah.
Everybody has to...
Yeah, we're gonna have an executive session, so just real quick.
Kenny, we're having an executive session for ten minutes.
All right. I just gotta ask a question, so I can wait. I'll see if you can talk to him. I don't know what you want your job out to. All right.
Do you have any time out?
Yeah.
Everybody has to...
Yeah, we're gonna have an executive session, so just real quick.
Kenny, we're having an executive session for ten minutes.
All right. I just gotta ask a question, so I can wait. I'll see if you can talk to him. I don't know what you want your job out to. All right.
Do you have any time out?
Yeah.
Everybody has to...
Yeah, we're gonna have an executive session, so just real quick.
Kenny, we're having an executive session for ten minutes.
All right. I just gotta ask a question, so I can wait. I'll see if you can talk to him. I don't know what you want your job out to. All right.
Do you have any time out?
Yeah.
Everybody has to...
Yeah, we're gonna have an executive session, so just real quick.
Kenny, we're having an executive session for ten minutes.
All right. I just gotta ask a question, so I can wait. I'll see if you can talk to him. I don't know what you want your job out to. All right.
Do you have any time out?
Yeah.
Everybody has to...
Yeah, we're gonna have an executive session, so just real quick.
Kenny, we're having an executive session for ten minutes.
All right. I just gotta ask a question, so I can wait. I'll see if you can talk to him. I don't know what you want your job out to. All right.
Do you have any time out?
Yeah.
Everybody has to...
Yeah, we're gonna have an executive session, so just real quick.
Kenny, we're having an executive session for ten minutes.
All right. I just gotta ask a question, so I can wait. I'll see if you can talk to him. I don't know what you want your job out to. All right.
Do you have any time out?
Yeah.
Everybody has to...
Yeah, we're gonna have an executive session, so just real quick.
Kenny, we're having an executive session for ten minutes.
All right. I just gotta ask a question, so I can wait. I'll see if you can talk to him. I don't know what you want your job out to. All right.
Do you have any time out?
Yeah.
Everybody has to...
Yeah, we're gonna have an executive session, so just real quick.
Kenny, we're having an executive session for ten minutes.
All right. I just gotta ask a question, so I can wait. I'll see if you can talk to him. I don't know what you want your job out to. All right.
Do you have any time out?
Yeah.
Everybody has to...
Yeah, we're gonna have an executive session, so just real quick.
Kenny, we're having an executive session for ten minutes.
All right. I just gotta ask a question, so I can wait. I'll see if you can talk to him. I don't know what you want your job out to. All right.
Do you have any time out?
Yeah.
Everybody has to...
Yeah, we're gonna have an executive session, so just real quick.
Kenny, we're having an executive session for ten minutes.
All right. I just gotta ask a question, so I can wait. I'll see if you can talk to him. I don't know what you want your job out to. All right.
Do you have any time out?
Yeah.
Everybody has to...
Yeah, we're gonna have an executive session, so just real quick.
Kenny, we're having an executive session for ten minutes.
All right. I just gotta ask a question, so I can wait. I'll see if you can talk to him. I don't know what you want your job out to. All right.
Do you have any time out?
Yeah.
Everybody has to...
Yeah, we're gonna have an executive session, so just real quick.
Kenny, we're having an executive session for ten minutes.
All right. I just gotta ask a question, so I can wait. I'll see if you can talk to him. I don't know what you want your job out to. All right.
Do you have any time out?
Yeah.
Everybody has to...
Yeah, we're gonna have an executive session, so just real quick.
Kenny, we're having an executive session for ten minutes.
All right. I just gotta ask a question, so I can wait. I'll see if you can talk to him. I don't know what you want your job out to. All right.
Do you have any time out?
Yeah.
Everybody has to...
Yeah, we're gonna have an executive session, so just real quick.
Kenny, we're having an executive session for ten minutes.
All right. I just gotta ask a question, so I can wait. I'll see if you can talk to him. I don't know what you want your job out to. All right.
Do you have any time out?
Yeah.
Everybody has to...
Yeah, we're gonna have an executive session, so just real quick.
Kenny, we're having an executive session for ten minutes.
All right. I just gotta ask a question, so I can wait. I'll see if you can talk to him. I don't know what you want your job out to. All right.
Do you have any time out?
Yeah.
Everybody has to...
Yeah, we're gonna have an executive session, so just real quick.
Kenny, we're having an executive session for ten minutes.
All right. I just gotta ask a question, so I can wait. I'll see if you can talk to him. I don't know what you want your job out to. All right.
Do you have any time out?
Yeah.
Everybody has to...
Yeah, we're gonna have an executive session, so just real quick.
Kenny, we're having an executive session for ten minutes.
All right. I just gotta ask a question, so I can wait. I'll see if you can talk to him. I don't know what you want your job out to. All right.
Do you have any time out?
Yeah.
Everybody has to...
Yeah, we're gonna have an executive session, so just real quick.
Kenny, we're having an executive session for ten minutes.
All right. I just gotta ask a question, so I can wait. I'll see if you can talk to him. I don't know what you want your job out to. All right.
Do you have any time out?
Yeah.
Everybody has to...
Yeah, we're gonna have an executive session, so just real quick.
Kenny, we're having an executive session for ten minutes.
All right. I just gotta ask a question, so I can wait. I'll see if you can talk to him. I don't know what you want your job out to. All right.
Do you have any time out?
Yeah.
Everybody has to...
Yeah, we're gonna have an executive session, so just real quick.
Kenny, we're having an executive session for ten minutes.
All right. I just gotta ask a question, so I can wait. I'll see if you can talk to him. I don't know what you want your job out to. All right.
Do you have any time out?
Yeah.
Everybody has to...
Yeah, we're gonna have an executive session, so just real quick.
Kenny, we're having an executive session for ten minutes.
All right. I just gotta ask a question, so I can wait. I'll see if you can talk to him. I don't know what you want your job out to. All right.
Do you have any time out?
Yeah.
Everybody has to...
Yeah, we're gonna have an executive session, so just real quick.
Kenny, we're having an executive session for ten minutes.
All right. I just gotta ask a question, so I can wait. I'll see if you can talk to him. I don't know what you want your job out to. All right.
Do you have any time out?
Yeah.
Everybody has to...
Yeah, we're gonna have an executive session, so just real quick.
Kenny, we're having an executive session for ten minutes.
All right. I just gotta ask a question, so I can wait. I'll see if you can talk to him. I don't know what you want your job out to. All right.
Do you have any time out?
Yeah.
Everybody has to...
Yeah, we're gonna have an executive session, so just real quick.
Kenny, we're having an executive session for ten minutes.
All right. I just gotta ask a question, so I can wait. I'll see if you can talk to him. I don't know what you want your job out to. All right.
Do you have any time out?
Yeah.
Everybody has to...
Yeah, we're gonna have an executive session, so just real quick.
Kenny, we're having an executive session for ten minutes.
All right. I just gotta ask a question, so I can wait. I'll see if you can talk to him. I don't know what you want your job out to. All right.
Do you have any time out?
Yeah.
Everybody has to...
Yeah, we're gonna have an executive session, so just real quick.
Kenny, we're having an executive session for ten minutes.
All right. I just gotta ask a question, so I can wait. I'll see if you can talk to him. I don't know what you want your job out to. All right.
Do you have any time out?
Yeah.
Everybody has to...
Yeah, we're gonna have an executive session, so just real quick.
Kenny, we're having an executive session for ten minutes.
All right. I just gotta ask a question, so I can wait. I'll see if you can talk to him. I don't know what you want your job out to. All right.
Do you have any time out?
Yeah.
Everybody has to...
Yeah, we're gonna have an executive session, so just real quick.
Kenny, we're having an executive session for ten minutes.
All right. I just gotta ask a question, so I can wait. I'll see if you can talk to him. I don't know what you want your job out to. All right.
Do you have any time out?
Yeah.
Everybody has to...
Yeah, we're gonna have an executive session, so just real quick.
Kenny, we're having an executive session for ten minutes.
All right. I just gotta ask a question, so I can wait. I'll see if you can talk to him. I don't know what you want your job out to. All right.
Do you have any time out?
Yeah.
Everybody has to...
Yeah, we're gonna have an executive session, so just real quick.
Kenny, we're having an executive session for ten minutes.
All right. I just gotta ask a question, so I can wait. I'll see if you can talk to him. I don't know what you want your job out to. All right.
Do you have any time out?
Yeah.
Everybody has to...
Yeah, we're gonna have an executive session, so just real quick.
Kenny, we're having an executive session for ten minutes.
All right. I just gotta ask a question, so I can wait. I'll see if you can talk to him. I don't know what you want your job out to. All right.
Do you have any time out?
Yeah.
Everybody has to...
Yeah, we're gonna have an executive session, so just real quick.
Kenny, we're having an executive session for ten minutes.
All right. I just gotta ask a question, so I can wait. I'll see if you can talk to him. I don't know what you want your job out to. All right.
Do you have any time out?
Yeah.
Everybody has to...
Yeah, we're gonna have an executive session, so just real quick.
Kenny, we're having an executive session for ten minutes.
All right. I just gotta ask a question, so I can wait. I'll see if you can talk to him. I don't know what you want your job out to. All right.
Do you have any time out?
Yeah.
Everybody has to...
Yeah, we're gonna have an executive session, so just real quick.
Kenny, we're having an executive session for ten minutes.
All right. I just gotta ask a question, so I can wait. I'll see if you can talk to him. I don't know what you want your job out to. All right.
Do you have any time out?
Yeah.
Everybody has to...
Yeah, we're gonna have an executive session, so just real quick.
Kenny, we're having an executive session for ten minutes.
All right. I just gotta ask a question, so I can wait. I'll see if you can talk to him. I don't know what you want your job out to. All right.
Do you have any time out?
Yeah.
Everybody has to...
Yeah, we're gonna have an executive session, so just real quick.
Kenny, we're having an executive session for ten minutes.
All right. I just gotta ask a question, so I can wait. I'll see if you can talk to him. I don't know what you want your job out to. All right.
Do you have any time out?
Yeah.
Everybody has to...
Yeah, we're gonna have an executive session, so just real quick.
Kenny, we're having an executive session for ten minutes.
All right. I just gotta ask a question, so I can wait. I'll see if you can talk to him. I don't know what you want your job out to. All right.
Do you have any time out?
Yeah.
Everybody has to...
Yeah, we're gonna have an executive session, so just real quick.
Kenny, we're having an executive session for ten minutes.
All right. I just gotta ask a question, so I can wait. I'll see if you can talk to him. I don't know what you want your job out to. All right.
Do you have any time out?
Yeah.
Everybody has to...
Yeah, we're gonna have an executive session, so just real quick.
Kenny, we're having an executive session for ten minutes.
All right. I just gotta ask a question, so I can wait. I'll see if you can talk to him. I don't know what you want your job out to. All right.
Do you have any time out?
Yeah.
Everybody has to...
Yeah, we're gonna have an executive session, so just real quick.
Kenny, we're having an executive session for ten minutes.
All right. I just gotta ask a question, so I can wait. I'll see if you can talk to him. I don't know what you want your job out to. All right.
Do you have any time out?
Yeah.
Everybody has to...
Yeah, we're gonna have an executive session, so just real quick.
Kenny, we're having an executive session for ten minutes.
All right. I just gotta ask a question, so I can wait. I'll see if you can talk to him. I don't know what you want your job out to. All right.
Do you have any time out?
Yeah.
Everybody has to...
Yeah, we're gonna have an executive session, so just real quick.
Kenny, we're having an executive session for ten minutes.
All right. I just gotta ask a question, so I can wait. I'll see if you can talk to him. I don't know what you want your job out to. All right.
Do you have any time out?
Yeah.
Everybody has to...
Yeah, we're gonna have an executive session, so just real quick.
Kenny, we're having an executive session for ten minutes.
All right. I just gotta ask a question, so I can wait. I'll see if you can talk to him. I don't know what you want your job out to. All right.
Do you have any time out?
Yeah.
Everybody has to...
Yeah, we're gonna have an executive session, so just real quick.
Kenny, we're having an executive session for ten minutes.
All right. I just gotta ask a question, so I can wait. I'll see if you can talk to him. I don't know what you want your job out to. All right.
Do you have any time out?
Yeah.
Everybody has to...
Yeah, we're gonna have an executive session, so just real quick.
Kenny, we're having an executive session for ten minutes.
All right. I just gotta ask a question, so I can wait. I'll see if you can talk to him. I don't know what you want your job out to. All right.
Do you have any time out?
Yeah.
Everybody has to...
Yeah, we're gonna have an executive session, so just real quick.
Kenny, we're having an executive session for ten minutes.
All right. I just gotta ask a question, so I can wait. I'll see if you can talk to him. I don't know what you want your job out to. All right.
Do you have any time out?
Yeah.
Everybody has to...
Yeah, we're gonna have an executive session, so just real quick.
Kenny, we're having an executive session for ten minutes.
All right. I just gotta ask a question, so I can wait. I'll see if you can talk to him. I don't know what you want your job out to. All right.
Do you have any time out?
Yeah.
Everybody has to...
Yeah, we're gonna have an executive session, so just real quick.
Kenny, we're having an executive session for ten minutes.
All right. I just gotta ask a question, so I can wait. I'll see if you can talk to him. I don't know what you want your job out to. All right.
Do you have any time out?
Yeah.
Everybody has to...
Yeah, we're gonna have an executive session, so just real quick.
Kenny, we're having an executive session for ten minutes.
All right. I just gotta ask a question, so I can wait. I'll see if you can talk to him. I don't know what you want your job out to. All right.
Do you have any time out?
Yeah.
Everybody has to...
Yeah, we're gonna have an executive session, so just real quick.
Kenny, we're having an executive session for ten minutes.
All right. I just gotta ask a question, so I can wait. I'll see if you can talk to him. I don't know what you want your job out to. All right.
Do you have any time out?
Yeah.
Everybody has to...
Yeah, we're gonna have an executive session, so just real quick.
Kenny, we're having an executive session for ten minutes.
Castell.
Do I read them?
But I'm not sure what I mean.
Okay.
Well, go ahead and read mine.
Go ahead.
Home City Rain, uh, dollar for a forty-three-hundred gallon tanker, uh, it's a dollar twenty. And price per gallon on minimum of two thousand gallons would be a dollar twenty-five.
What are they using?
Uh, thirty percent solution.
Of magnesium chloride?
Um, doesn't have that on here. But that's what bid is, magnesium, right?
Yeah.
That's what we asked for. Is there a representative from home city?
Oh, okay, thank you, yes.
And then the other would be from, is it Scottwood?
Scottwood Industries?
Yeah.
So, uh, what are you going to be reading exactly?
Lost, to be honest.
No, you're good, you're fine. So, uh... Their quantity is a hundred and fifty thousand gallons, is that correct?
Say that again.
A hundred and fifty thousand gallons per quantity?
Correct.
Okay, uh, at a dollar thirty-three for thirty percent minimum. For a hundred ninety-nine five.
So, you heard, you have questions, uh, of the representatives that are here?
Well, is the one from home, is that magnesium or product?
If you, you gentlemen want to come on up, you're more than welcome to, that way Scott can ask questions or we can ask questions. Yeah, yeah.
Hold the stand.
Yeah, go ahead.
First of all, I haven't got a chance to meet him.
Go ahead. Um, so, so your solution's magnesium and, and you guys had the ability to haul it by the tanker and?
Uh, my solution is a calcium chloride.
Okay.
Solution.
Okay.
And yes, we haul it by tanker.
And you requested magnesium, that's what we've always done, okay. Difference between, if you would, just explain the difference between calcium and magnesium?
Um, calcium chloride is, uh, just a little bit different solution. Um, typically calcium chloride you'll use in lesser quantities, uh, it's got a little bit better effect in this rate. Our solution is a little bit less percentage, so we apply about a half gallon per square yard of stainless magnesium chloride.
Okay. But, correct me if I'm wrong, um, magne- magnesium's a little less corrosive than calcium? Calcium's what we put in our tractor tires, or used to, for weight, okay?
And yeah, that's a little bit more corrosive, isn't it?
Is, is that, I mean, from what I understand, but...
I, I would say it's pretty long the same length of the oil.
Do you, and do you have, currently have customers that are using it to apply to their rooms for dust control?
Yep.
Okay.
Apply in Ewok County, Rockford County, Anderson.
Okay.
This residential stuff in Marshall County.
Okay. I, lots, was it just? I mean, do you want?
Again, it, it, I, I heard the calcium chloride took more per square yard, uh, than what magnesium was. Again, well, I've heard.
I was, I was kind of curious about that, I actually was counting it out the other day, but that was said last year, I was curious where that came from.
And your representative, Scottwood?
Yes, I'm representative of Scottwood. Our product is thirty percent magnesium chloride.
Okay.
Um, there is a difference between a blended product, a calcium chloride product, to magnesium chloride. From what we have seen from the analysis sheet that has been provided is that it does require more mag- or calcium chloride to equate to magnesium chloride's effectiveness level. So, either you'll see that effectiveness down as a difference on the road or you have the, the possibility of, uh, needing to put more gallons down per square yard with the other solution. From a corrosion standpoint, magnesium chloride does have a lower corrosive level than calcium.
That's, that's what I'd always understood. Is your got some stuff we have, dust control?
It should have thirty percent magnesium chloride solution.
I think I'd like to do a little more research between the two because since we have two different bids, we can't really look and see and, and give an honest answer of what is better for what we've got. So, I'm gonna need just a little bit of time to look into the properties and qualities magnesium chloride versus the, uh, calcium chloride. And like I say, just reason being is I've always understood that calcium chloride is more corrosive to vehicles and roads and everything else. So, I, I'd give, I need a little time to look into this, I, I just seem capable of it right now.
And, and, uh, you guys sell calcium also?
We do have calcium chloride.
You do have calcium chloride?
Yep.
So, are you interested in bidding calcium?
We, so do a rebid on this and take the specs out of the bid?
Where's, where's the bid sheet at? Is the bid sheet there?
Yeah, I, I'm just curious if you would, if, if we, if we decided to go with calcium, would you be interested in, uh, rebidding it if Scott said that or if we did a rebid?
We would certainly take a look at it, um, but...
I still think we're preparing a, a staff here, so what pattern?
Of course, maybe this can, you get magnesium chloride.
Yeah, magnesium chloride.
Okay. And so is there reason, I mean, on, on the bid sheet, it said magnesium?
No, the bid sheet does not say magnesium, it just says dust control. That's what, that's why I just looked at, I wanted to know, check that, make sure.
It does say thirty percent magnesium.
So, did you have something else to add to this?
There, I think there was two pages.
Okay.
Is there two pages on that?
Yes, there's material specification, magnesium chloride, thirty percent minimum concentration, shall we get the specification shown in section seventeen oh two of this?
Is that, this one is that page?
But what you're saying is, is the companies that you deal with, Southmore and Marshall, and is it Brown U and some other, their use of calcium, not magnesium?
So, there, there was, you did specify magnesium, correct?
We had another sheet with this.
This is the sheet, sorry, you guys can sit back, you have that on the sheet.
Do you know offhand, I mean, what your mag- chloride is priced?
The same product as what I was suing.
So, you did specify magnesium chloride, right?
Right, but price-wise, where is it?
So, they, the, the bid sheet did specify magnesium chloride. That was on, that was on the second page. So, then, I, I'm, I'm, I don't believe that there's any reason to research further because if we did specify magnesium chloride and you've got calcium chloride, then we're gonna have to go with the...
Well, the only, the only thing I'd like to maybe entertain is, I mean, if we can get magnesium chloride from two different sources.
Unfortunately, unfortunately, this year, I don't think we're gonna be able to keep because of the fact that the bid's already been opened, he already knows the price. That would be, that would be out of the hesitation there. I, I see where you're going with that, as far as getting competitive bids from two different sources. But, since the bids have already been open, I, I don't see how we can go for around, sort of, this year.
I, I have to talk to Jennifer.
Yep, yep.
Jennifer, did they, did?
Um, I gave the information to Scott and Scott said to go ahead and have you, um, put your bid in for the calcium chloride.
I turned my stuff in, I had to get a look over last week, make sure.
Yeah, and I gave it, I, I gave it to Scott, and he said just to go ahead and have him put the bid in.
And so, and there again, like I say, since the bid's already got opened, unfortunately, it, it was spelled out there that it would be magnesium chloride. If you have the capability to do magnesium chloride, I, I really wish that you would have bid that rather than the calcium. So, uh, you know, next year, bid magnesium and we'll see where we come up with between the...
What's, uh, what exactly was termed in by them as far as their inspection?
As far as what?
Their MSDS inspection on their magnesium chloride.
Well, and seeing, actually, I had her read the wrong thing because that was, uh...
About their analysis and those things, was, uh...
Thirty percent solution?
Was it, is it like a kind of smells product or what exactly is that?
Yeah, there's a CP dash sheet on magnesium chloride, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, that's all I think.
Yep. So... That's right, okay. So, like I said, I'm, I'm, I'm hesitant to... I'm hesitant to allow you to bid after the bid's already been opened.
Sure.
So, you, I mean, you can understand that, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. So, I, I would, uh, I'd entertain a motion then to, uh, accept Scottwood Industries' bid for magnesium chloride.
So, good.
Second.
And proper the movement seconded to accept Scottwood Industries', uh, bid for magnesium chloride for road stabilization and dust control this year. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carried.
Do we need to copy the copies of everything submitted?
Sure.
Chris, I'd be glad to get it. You guys get yours in on the rail, both.
Do you need a copy of the room? Do you need a copy of the room?
Thanks, guys.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, thanks.
I'm sorry?
It's a spreadsheet.
Yeah, they're, no, that, that was a one pager that came with it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Take care. Um, as far as getting the product to us this year and that kind of thing, do you foresee any problems?
Not at all.
He had a problem with that.
Two years ago, yeah, no, not, not at all.
Okay.
You know, between that, we have more trust, credibility, more freedom.
Appreciate it. Take care.
All right, what else you got?
Well, I've talked a little bit since how Mary and, uh, Jeff were coming down, uh, accident came out, uh, we got computer issues, uh, server control, uh, I'm not sure where it's the current, whether we need to get a server for ourselves or how many needs to be looked at here servers or, um...
Did we have a conversation with backseat passageways in the...
Well, I couldn't go in on the...
Okay, here.
Yeah, yeah.
Last week.
That's a mess.
Okay.
Mary's helping with most of it, um, while I have been working on other things.
Okay. I can't get into this call. It's just there. Okay, so, we got a Windows update on Jennifer's computer last, or a week ago, Thursday or Friday. Monday, and we had been in the STARS program doing stuff. Monday, I had been in it all morning.
Working great.
Yeah, working great. At around eleven or eleven-thirty, I got a Windows update on my computer, so I had to stop, it did its little thing. When I restarted my computer, I could not open the STARS program. Jennifer lost yours as well. Um, so, I called Jeannie. Jeannie called me, uh, we did this, we did that, we could not get the data folder to open. So, we called IP Pathways and so the rest of the week, I was on a conference call with Jeannie and IP Pathways at the same time to try to find our data. We had just started putting in twenty-twenty-fives, so you know how far behind we were last year. All of that is gone.
All of twenty-twenty-five is gone or everything is gone?
Everything that we have put in for last year is gone.
Since October, right?
And they've not set up on the server for that.
There was a, oh, you're... There was a backup when they switched IT companies.
Right.
Like, that was the last one.
Ten second, or October second or October sixth, somewhere around there.
During the first week or two.
Was that was the last backup that we had in our STARS program, and that's all the data that they can find. So, all, all of stuff from the past years is there, but just not twenty-twenty-four.
So, with twenty-twenty-four is there because it was whatever was put in before, um, they switched IT companies. They didn't put the STARS program on the server. And they switched over.
So, that was just something that got missed or what? I mean, is that, is that kind of what I'm hearing, that got missed and we switched over?
Was it on the server? I don't think it was ever on the server to begin with because the STARS program is basically on your desktop, it's on the C drive.
Okay.
And when I started, they connected my computer to Jennifer's computer to where I could get that information and we both could be working on the STARS program at the same time without any interruptions.
Okay.
Um... It, to Jennifer and I, it just seems like when whoever it was set up our computers with new, with a new person that started, it seems like something just got lost, wasn't done correctly or something to where
was it matched?
that data was not being saved on the computer.
Like, everything was pulled across.
Right. So, I've talked to Jeannie and IP Pathways Friday and I said, okay. And I also discussed this with Jennifer to see what she should adjust it, um, and I also mentioned it to Scott. Um, I asked if there was any way we can take that old information that we have on the computer, put that like in an old folder to where we can still have access to it, but, uh, you know, the chances are we probably won't, you know, for two thousand and fifteen, all those other older years. Um, and then make a new STARS program starting January one, twenty-twenty-five. And the only reason why I suggest that is because there were so many different people entering all of that data throughout the years. And they weren't entering it correctly, they weren't putting it in the correct spot, therefore, any reports that we would, uh, print on would not be accurate and not correct. And with Jennifer starting and I starting at January one, twenty-twenty-five and moving forward, we would get that information in the correct spot and correctly entered to where when we did print off those reports, they would be accurate.
Okay.
And on the old system, uh, like if we're in services for the equipment, there's like fifteen filters. They're not named fuel filter, transmission filter, oil filter, it's just filters. Well, how many people have been using and bouncing back and forth? So, if we start with a new program, all of that will be wiped off except for the one that we would be able to use.
And then, you know, you put in filter and then there's the section where you put the part number in and you can hold on a note, like oil filter for, you know, and it's under whatever piece of equipment.
Well, you can put, there's the drop-down menu under filters for oil filters, air filters, transmission filters, so on and so forth.
Well, the information is put in there as a oil filter or a transmission filter, but then there's, in that same drop-down deal, it's just plenty of filters and some of the, like, repairs.
Repairs are misspelled. Three times and they're, two of them are misspelled.
Yeah.
How do we get rid of that, you know?
Yeah, yeah. So, you want to clean up and make things more organized and get it to where it's a little bit better user-friendly?
Right. Yes.
And, I mean, it wasn't being utilized to its potential for what the county is paying for this program. Um, there, we were doing a lot of spreadsheets, thank goodness, right now I kept doing those spreadsheets, but those spreadsheets were something that we were going to, um, try to get rid of, we're gonna keep them through twenty-twenty-five and make sure that we're putting it into the STARS and see if that matches up. But now we're gonna have to continue with that spreadsheet until...
So, what I hear, problem number one is you have no place to back it up right now.
Well, they did, IP Pathways went ahead and put it on the server. They said it was not going to take up that much space right now, it was hardly any at all, they said. And I did, uh, talk to, uh, Aaron about it and say that they put it on there so that we should be aware of it. And when I looked at our drive, which was the server, our little portion of it, it did not look like that red mark moved.
Well, I'm curious, uh, I'm, I've got IP Pathways contract pulled up here and I'm, I'm trying to figure out how they missed getting you guys backed up to begin with when we switched over because...
I don't think it was put on the server when networks...
Networks plus, yeah, Networks plus did not have it.
They got very thorough on that first one. It was kept on...
But it was, it was being backed up before, if you have the storage of that.
It was, it was backed up on our C drive. On our local machine.
On your local, on your local?
Yes.
Not out on a server or anything, it was just being backed up. I guess the STARS, the STARS program is set up, or the way Jeannie set it up is to where it does it... to where it does its own backup, and it puts it in its own little folder to where, if you did have any problems, you can click on that folder and that will bring up all of your information.
But then if your local.
That was the data folder.
If your local hard drive fails and you've lost everything anyway.
Yeah, but what happened was when we got that, well, however that, this happened, um, those data files were empty. There was error message after error message after error message when we clicked on. And IP Pathways searched my computer, searched Jennifer's computer, searched everywhere that they could possibly search for the STARS, and the ones that they did find, there's nothing in it.
But do you know what actually actually caused it?
No. All I know is when I did that.
Or that Windows, um.
That Windows update is when neither one of us could click on the STARS program, it would not open. We just had error messages all over the place.
And it wasn't backing up.
Well, that's a big key to me right here, is not backing up. That's the biggest thing to me right here.
Right.
So whether it was the Windows update, or whether it was something else that happens, I mean.
So you still haven't gotten back into it?
They have, well, yes, IP Pathways and, and, uh, Jeannie finally got the STARS program to where we can click on it and open it, and that's how we found out that all of the twenty twenty four information that we had entered was, was not there. The older stuff, older years are there.
And stuff that had been entered before was saved. It, before this first week in October, or whatever it was, was saved, but nothing that was entered after that, which, but we were entering stuff there back in February.
So it was doing the switch, it was doing the switch over when IP Pathways and, and Networks Plus, when everything kind of got convoluted and it's out there and never, never lands.
That's what it seemed, yeah, that's, that's the only thing that they can all figure out.
So what's, what's the, what's their solution now? I mean.
We're going to have to start over.
You got to start entering everything again from October.
Well, no, we're not going to. We have paper copies unless you guys want us to go back and enter everything from two thousand and four, and that's three big pieces of stuff. Twenty four, I'm done again.
Well, from October twenty four, everything that you entered in is gone up till this point today.
Right, which.
Which.
We were entering stuff to, from February in October.
Yeah, no, yeah, I understand that, yeah.
And I mean, if we have to, we will, um.
How is that going to skew our data for, uh, usage, for mileage, or things like that?
That's why we were going to start.
Like I said, things were not entered correctly, we're in the same spot to where that information is not going to be accurate at all.
But I mean, what, what we don't have in there now, how is that going to skew our data looking forward? If, if we want to know six months from now, how many filters we used, how, are you going to have to go back with your paper copies and things like that? Is that, so is that?
You're saying the rock and field?
Yeah, yeah.
We, we would actually have to go back in and enter all that data. But is it really just since like October of last year? Because is it that about when you switched over?
No.
No, what you're saying is.
It's clear back from February. Anything.
October was the, uh, my backup.
Okay.
There was paperwork sitting there from clear back to February.
Okay, okay, that was in, okay, now I get you, all right.
So since October, they've entered all that.
I got you.
It's gone.
That, well, that, that is my kind of hesitation on saying don't re-enter it because if we're going to rely on this data for reports, for usage, everything else, it, it's going to skew it, I mean, put back in February, it's going to skew it big time when we go back and look at these reports.
It is, you are correct.
So the ask of us is whether we, whether you want, whether we want you to go back to February and start from February?
Well, I think the biggest ask to us too is whether or not we put them on our own server, or how we do that also. Yeah, I mean, that's the second part.
I, well, I think something to be looked at is, because the line from here, the, the server up here is almost out of space anyway. They're up close.
That's what we're.
Right.
Did we, did we look?
It's red on our side.
They said, do you have that printout that I gave you, that server printout?
So let's, let's find that question out, Chris, whether, if you can have Aaron reach out and find out how much space is available on your server? If there's adequate space on your server, no problem.
Cause we were, we were given an R drive on the server up here, so that way things would get backed up. And we've been putting all of our stuff in there for the past two, three months, and now our R drive says it's ninety-three percent full.
Let's ask that question also, why, why would it show that it's almost full?
And we did, IP Pathways did send us an email, which we can get an email, an email to Chris, so you guys can look at it. And it said that the county attorney is using the most space of the server, and then there's the other departments, but all of, but all of our departments, according to what we see, is all on our server. We just have a little piece in that server.
Whatever, whatever they have partitioned off or the bridge out of that server.
Is full.
Yeah, so, so yeah, that's what we need to look at.
That we need to think too, as we talked this morning, is the weed department same way? You know, is, is, uh, cause they start ordering down there for all the chemicals, so.
So what?
They didn't back it up.
Well, that's, that's what, that's what you need to look at, see, has it gotten backed up? Has anything they put in?
When, when, uh, debt companies here, um, they didn't have a server or a backup deal down there. This is IP Pathways has come in, I'm not sure if that's still covered, because there was a little box down at the weed department that was a backup.
Is there a reason you can't use it, buy your own external hard drives and just back up daily on external hard drives? They're.
You mean with USBs?
They're.
No, they're, okay, yeah.
And then, I mean, you can buy those fairly inexpensive. I don't know the difference, you know, whether we need to find out the information if the, if the R drive on her, on the server that's here in this building has the potential for you, that would be, be the best way, but if it doesn't, I mean.
But we need to make sure that our computers all can get into the same programs, and that they're kind of, like us working in the STARS with two different computers.
I would lean on IP Pathways to get that figured out.
And the reason.
That's what we're paying for.
The reason it's hard with our drive was because if I'm down there, I can shore it up.
You can, you can retrieve the information ready, or it's back to the email myself, or the email back from them.
Right.
Sure.
All right, well, let's find out that information, and then we'll, uh, we'll table this right now and look forward with it. Get the information we need.
Jeannie said that she was going to work on getting us set up with the new program yesterday, so I'm looking forward to her calling possibly today or tomorrow. Is that something that we could go ahead and go through with this, just starting fresh as of January?
You're talking about the GPS and the STARS together?
No, not GPS, just the STARS program.
Or you want us to go back and re-enter everything in twenty twenty four?
I'm almost thinking we need to.
That's, I mean.
Like I said, always your data is going to be skewed whenever you try to print a report, then you're going to have to go back and thumb through paper copies then. So if you're going to thumb through paper copies, let's just get it entered in again, and I mean, it's twice the work, but I don't see that we can, we can not do it.
But that's just going to prolong us getting twenty twenty five.
I, I understand that.
Because we still have to go in and do the parts, because parts are the, the.
I think if I, if I were approaching it from your position, I would, I would make January one and current data priority, and then when you have time.
Start entering the other.
Work on the other, but, but always make your current priority, that, I, that's just.
Sure.
All right, I agree with you.
Well, we have to, we just have to get the rock tickets. We've done it up here in a timely manner, so.
But like I said, if, if our data is skewed when we're trying to print reports and look at how much rock we're using and everything else, if you're having to go back and, and dig paper tickets out, then we're no better off than we were before. So, you know, in twenty twenty, start with January one, twenty twenty five, as he said, and, and start there, get everything caught up, and then as you get caught up, start entering in the data from back before.
Okay.
That, that would make more sense to me.
Yeah.
It is what it is, I mean.
Yeah.
We got to do, we got to do.
Catch twenty-two, what do you, what do you do?
Well, that's what we talked about in our, in our staff meeting this morning, um, was that when someone calls and says, you know, you haven't been here for so long, or they're saying, hey, this road needs rock, and we're trying to decide what roads need rock more, can you go back in and look at what, when the last time we put rock on that road, and how much, because the data is not there.
Your, your, your paper ticket.
That's, I mean, that's, again, that was where my question was, you know, I'd love to just start over fresh, but again, it's still inventory wise and.
I think, I think that's the biggest key right there, so.
So if that's.
You're going to have to get it entered back in, but twenty twenty five, January one, straight away.
Then we will not need a new STARS program because we can just start on. No, we'll just go through with that one. Would there be some possibility for overtime to work on it on the weekends, or just not, and so we get really?
You need to pose that question to Scott.
No, I know, like, we are only budgeted so much for our hours, so, I don't know.
Okay, like I said, you have to pose that question to Scott, see where, see where he can come up, what he can do.
Okay, okay. Well, we'll, we'll work on it the best that we can. You've done pretty good catching up. I mean, obviously you did.
Yes. Yeah, I mean, I mean, yeah, it was.
It's a lot, right.
I mean, nonstop, tight, and, but yeah, we're getting it.
Yep.
And it's, it's, it's sad, we have to do it again, but, you know, at least we caught it now rather than six months from now, when you have six, four months, where the data would have disappeared, so.
Well, thankfully, we had to take a twenty twenty four exposure. Yeah, I had the guys take it up the other day when they were moving my desk.
They took twenty-three up.
No, I made it up to forty on that.
So did they have any idea why that update would have caused that?
Well, they, they, uh, IP Pathways said that Windows makes tweaks and changes, and they don't spell out, which, what they're changing, or what they're updating, or anything, so therefore now.
You'll have to look on your.
And that's not, that's not the real reason that they said they don't really know why that data was lost, whether it's, it was attacked properly, or the Windows updating.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
I can't wait to enter, maybe we'll figure out what we're going to serve.
Right, thank you.
David, you on the mic? First, Keith? This is David, he's, uh, partner with us today, I believe, originally, if you'd like to bring him in, this is Andrew. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Keith, nice to meet you. Linda Gerhardt.
How we doing?
Yeah, I'm great.
Pretty, nice to meet you.
Starting out there, uh, working in Max River. All right, all right. Cool, glad you're here.
All right, welcome to the game.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it.
You bet.
Yes.
Did you take him up for a round?
Yes.
Yes.
We had a lady call in, uh, I guess she works for Mayor now, Delia, Scott, wanted to see if we would come in and mow around her, trees and trees and some things like that. I told her that we don't really want to do that. Uh, she said, she had somebody down there, committee down there that, uh, works for another county, and their county used to come in and do that for them. Yeah, I said, well, I said, if we did that, I said, everybody in, everybody in, every city.
All the cities.
Would want it done.
Yeah.
Was that Melody?
Yes.
Unfortunately, we can't.
Huh?
Sorry, talk to you.
No, no, I just, I know Melody, Maddie, she, yep.
And unfortunately, we can't do that because, like I say, then everybody would want it, and we'd be using our resources for everything else rather than what we need to do.
Our budget money for, uh, this year, uh, the disposal for, for AKHW, uh, we went and picked up from, uh, Johnson County, Brown County in December, got the bill in January. Uh, for some reason, we're paying twenty fives out of twenty five instead of, uh, all the money over, uh, like we used to.
Because we don't do it here anymore.
Okay, so.
So that money is transferred over into twenty five, and so it's essentially being paid out of twenty four.
Okay, cause so my budget disposal is showing a negative four thousand dollars.
And you're going to be losing the money you got.
Right, which we don't have yet.
Right, and then we'll turn around and pay that.
Back into that, that's one, yeah.
Yep.
Uh, Brown County is possibly not doing it this year, they haven't signed contracts yet. Uh, they weren't sure, they got a new guy out of their, uh, transfer station, and he's thinking it costs too much for them to do it through us, but apparently they don't want all of the stuff that the state you have to have, and the cabinets you have to have, storage, and things like that, so. Our lane did go up, but their commissioner being lax, doesn't speak to them, and so we can't get the contract down, or not.
Yep.
And we're right back. Uh, see, I sent Todd a copy of that contract from PAM, uh, about the landfill contract they want to set up in the roots. We have talked to LRS, uh, they met with us down there, like, we do have some formal, con, or formal agreement yet. They did come in, their, their dollars are not super lower than what PAM's.
Or did they dump that?
Uh, apparently down here, uh, in Chavica, so it's not as private.
They're a local, local company out of twenty-four highway.
They, they've done theirs, they're going to have a warrant. Their fifty dollars are not worth class right now.
You're comparing two?
Well, we, we need, once we get a contract from them, we need to compare the two, yes. And now also on his thing that he emailed to us was that, uh, they, they were not sure if they're going to send any, uh, environmental fees or, uh, fuel fees, which the other, PAM does. Yeah, so we have more than that. Uh, we had our safety meeting last week, and after that, we had defensive driving and flagging class. Uh, paperwork's come up and did that, of course, and everybody passed, and our certificate is back already. We'll get there. I do have a new copy of that same sort of contract, if you got one. Bring it, bring it, bring it, where he's at now.
I would.
Okay, so.
Okay, that's just a.
Just pull in there again.
Okay, uh, did he send me the, like, general terms, yeah, he sent me the, what it really is, because, so. I wasn't going to look at that before I saw the, really.
Okay. All right, Dave, are you going to leave this on, let's see.
Uh, Matt's here today, um, we talked about two fifty four, we're ready for a bit, figure out that.
Should be open today, I hope.
Good.
Now, all we got to do is finish up the dirtwork and rock start rocking, and then go.
That people will be happy to hear that.
Yeah, I'll be.
I hope so, yeah, we all, we all hope so. Right after I completed the permit.
When we get tired of explaining, it wasn't our fault, it wasn't our fault, so, you know. But, uh, I'm glad that, I'm glad you guys are getting it done and getting ready to go, so, appreciate your work on that.
Uh, there's some trees down there on K Road between one thirty-four and one twenty-six, where we've been talking to the power company about. Hooking up the, they're popping some trees out, and they'll come in and cover it down. Uh, we're planning on doing that this week, uh, for weather comment and wind, and try to post on that probably next week.
Wind might take care of it, oh, right now.
Well, that's the whole purpose of this, long as we clean them out, because our power lines across the river, so.
Yeah.
There, uh, speaking of K Road, south of there, I think if you go to one ten, uh, I think we got a report from a lady who lives there, big hole there by the bridge. I haven't looked at it, I just said I would give you the information.
South of one ten, is it?
No, I believe it's going to be north of one ten. There's a bridge that goes across there going north, or runs east and west, but, I think Ken Bailey lives on one side, and all the rights live on the other, so. She just wondered if somebody could take a look at it.
Okay. Uh, I got an email this morning, or was it Eric, or last week, that, uh, there's a federal funding thing coming through, and it looks like they're a hundred percent on the cost share, we also, we're going to, we're going to dig into that. I can't remember who it was.
Right, but on, on what type of project, any multiple?
Something like bridges, things like that, so, I think we're going to look into that. Uh, the mulching, uh. Uh, the mulching, uh, X two seventy got done last week. Two seventy B to W got done last week and now he's on B two seventy to two seventy eight. I think that's how long that. Do you have anything else, Matt?
Oh, I have nothing. I've got nothing this week.
You were supposed to be taking care of the roots. How sad.
There you go.
Did you guys have a chance to look at that, the inquiry by the gentleman from out there by Delia on the road closure between one ten and one eighteen on C Road? Yeah, so you come in from one eighteen, go south, there's several railroad tracks there. And then you cross the railroad tracks and the road ends, C ends.
Yeah, that's again, that's what they tried to vacate back in twenty one.
Do you guys have any, I mean, any additional reservations about just closing the road versus vacating?
I don't. Do you Matt? Do you know what we're talking about? Yeah.
Because there's a tube, I think, down there that we've had to try to maintain and it's kind of a.
That that was one of the questions that I wanted answered and I I probably have legal opinion on this. If we close the road, we still own the road. What is our responsibility as far as if a tube goes out, the landowner's coming back and saying, hey, come replace the tube?
Well, I guess the question probably is two-fold, one being are they worried about the condition of the road or are they worried about drainage? Because I think.
I think right now they farm the river.
Yeah. They farm it.
Yes, yeah.
One of those.
Well, um, yeah.
I mean, I want to know what our liability is if we close the road and there's a tube in it and the tube collapses. What is our liability to replace that tube?
I think and you closed it.
Yes, not vacated it, just closed it.
Well, I mean, I think it's not, there's, I'm gonna separate it out. The physical danger to close the road, anybody who ventures onto it, including people owning, enjoying the properties have to be on notice the fact that they're not maintaining it. So they can't really complain about the condition of the road being substantial, right? Because it's they they've been notified and then that's even before you get to your Kansas Torque Law Act thing. I think there may be a question, and I don't know for sure, I've never had a look at this, but but it is a drainage problem. That this is somehow facilitating drainage. And they are, and it backs up and and that causes flooding or erosion or something like that, that may be something that's different. In the sense that you still own it, so it's like you have a piece of property right in the middle of there. And your structures on it are interfering with flow of water. So I would have, I think I would have concerns if you just, if they were talking about a drainage problem, that you wouldn't have to go there and somehow fix it. That doesn't mean you have to get a new tube. Maybe, you know, they go out there, dig up a tube and dig a trench. I don't know, or drainage feature or whatever, rock it in.
So maybe that's a conversation that we could have from road and bridge with the owners and say, look, our plan would be if this tube is still good, we'll leave it. But if there's a problem with the tube, they're probably gonna take it out and and just get their thoughts on it about closing the road. But I think we need to have a conversation with both parties since we've had an inquiry into closing the road versus vacating the road. I'd like to vacate because someday somebody may want to go all the way through there. But my knowledge, Matt, there's never been a bridge down there into that ever. Uh, this guy's been there for the sixth, fifth, fifth generation there, so. So, yeah, I'd like to move ahead and get some research, send letters out to the adjoining landowners. And like we did on the one out east of town here, east and south. Yeah, and and pursue it if nobody else has.
And I I I agree with that. Like I said, I just want to make sure what our liability is if it comes to, you know, because they're having trouble with the tube right now, apparently, or the tubes.
I I don't know that. They did at one point.
Back in twenty one, when we started to vacate, it looked not in good shape then.
Okay.
Or can't imagine what it is now.
So, I mean, it then I would I would think that we would like to get an agreement with landowners on both sides that state, we will not maintain, upgrade anything to the road once we vacate or once we close it. That's that's what I think would be probably the smartest thing to do, in my opinion. Legally, I don't know.
I mean, unless you vacated, you still have. The raiders probably made it up there. I mean, I think they they're, I mean, was there, because they really like, I mean, they still want to use the road? Is that their deal?
I don't know why they didn't.
I'm I'm not sure.
We we have.
Me and, but I'm just talking about the landowners on the other side. They they ride over it.
They're tired of people coming down there and.
Bugging on it.
Well, but this really, my question is, do they still even use that road even though it's closed?
Yes.
Okay.
They go farther this way, playing that.
Well, and that's what I think they need to know is to say, listen, you know.
Once we close it, it would not be.
Yeah, maintain.
May or may not be accessible.
Yeah, or and or you would take action to prevent drainage and basically destroy it as a road for, you know, that period of time or whatever.
So say, yeah, so let's let's have the conversation with the landowners. If there's objection to it, we can take that into consideration and we may or may not move ahead then.
Yep, sounds good.
Did you have any question that whether you have been funding or not?
We are not moving for this year. Yes, you'll actually.
Okay, so is he still billing then for the year?
Is he still billing for dumping or?
No, I think we had said that that he was just gonna dump free.
Right, but for this year, is he gonna, we're gonna take money out of his and put it dollars to cover that?
We'll we'll take it out.
Five grand.
We'll we'll take care of that. We'll we'll transfer some money.
Yep. I think that that's what we discussed.
Correct, it it was.
All right.
So if you wanna, I guess, moving forward so we know what an act, what what an accurate amount is, every every time he dumps, at the end of the year, let us know what that number is and then we'll transfer the money at the end of the year. I don't think it'll kill you to.
We we still have a traffic tonnage anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah, yes, we turned.
So that way, the the end of December, okay, it was X number dollars, we'll transfer that money.
I think you said historically it's been around five thousand or whatever, so. Yep.
That work?
Yep. All right.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Appreciate what you do.
Matt, thank you. Once again, welcome to county.
Matt, I got that too, man.
And then that's probably.
It's usually expected down there to check that out.
Ready to go to work for you anytime.
Pat, Chris? How you doing?
Good.
Get one more phone?
How are you? You probably got a brush on. You could get in there and brush off the melody, would you?
Where are we, on one ten road?
I don't know.
Where was the?
Service little dudes are. Oh, one of those steel loads, dude.
Oh.
I've tried that before here.
No, they don't like steep slopes and, yeah.
So I made I made some copies of different things together.
Okay. Hi, Pat.
Hi, guys. How are you?
I'm trying to get it all stapled into a package. I'm stapling it with. So here is the email that I originally got.
Yep.
Talked to her again and I highlighted her key points. So that it would be easier to follow. So the, I found out that there are two companies that make this equipment to do the fit testing for the fire particles. And there's two different ways of doing it. The Port Account that's in the Gmail that has the staple in it.
Yep.
That one does it by analyzing particles that are in the mask and outside of the mask. And then as you do the virpens side to side, up and down, just you could have bent over, reading, say the ABCs, and then a whole bunch of different facial things that you do. It's analyzing the particles outside the mask and inside and seeing if there's anything that's the same. Because they're adding a particulate to the mask, so it's getting that reading. And I don't know the science names behind that. The other machine is made by OHD and they are just purely doing a negative pressure. So it pulls a vacuum inside the mask against your face and it tells you whether that passes or fails. And the one that has my name on it, that's the fit test that I did Saturday. Had a scapa on northeast means just to see how it works. But basically, they have you hold your breath and then they look at you and they pull a negative pressure on the mask. It sucks to your face and then it measures how well it held that vacuum. And then they have you bend over and then shake your head and all these other motions and it's pulling that negative vacuum each time measuring it. And that's gives you the same result in my mind as the one from Port Account. But basically, it's telling you if your mask fits your guy with his face and conditions and shape so that he can enter inside of a structure and use an SCBA. But we are by NFA standards supposed to do that once a year regardless. And if we were an SCBA for anything, they have to have this test in order. There is some differences in prices all of the places. And I kind of learned from having MES and Wisefire COVID, they add their twenty twenty five, thirty percent onto it because they're gonna sell to their company. But I do have a quote coming directly from OHD this morning and just it's not here yet. And it is about, it is cheap, like a dozen dollars. Just to go directly to OHD, I.
And OHD is the one.
The MES quote. So to kind of go, you guys wanna go over the Gmail quote first, the one on the Port Account? So they, the eighty forty T, they come with a tablet. That way, we don't have to have a laptop. We don't have to have a designated computer to go with the machine. The tablet covers that, it keeps the software, it keeps the firefighters, their results and everything stored in it. And then we can share it with each department's computer so that they can keep their results in a file at the station. But the price of that machine was eleven thousand five seventy five. And this is directly from the company and I'm definitely dealing with this quote. The next one that I highlighted at the bottom of the first page, if you wanted to every year pay for it, they clean, repair and calibrate, which they happen to be done once a year. This year's current pricing is eleven twenty five for a year. With that, those go up with inflation and everything, like every cost that goes up. So the next page, if you just wanted to do a clean and calibrate for five years, then that was thirty eight oh five. And then the next one that I highlighted, the bumper to bumper warranty for five years, they're cleaning it, they've calibrated it and repaired it. It's forty one fifty five for five years. That just locks in the price for five years. You don't have to do those options to this machine. They just offer it when you buy the machine to be kind of discounted. You do the math, it's like four hundred dollars savings. It's another thing, savings over five years. So I didn't know what you guys are interested in thinking. I know it has to be calibrated every year. You can just pay it every year and it is what it is. And then you just pay the cost of the machine. Or if you want to, I would suggest the bumper to bumper.
That would be the smartest thing to do is bumper to bumper because cost-wise, when you start talking about repairing an instrument, it.
It adds up.
It adds up real quick. So as far as an insurance type thing, the bumper to bumper would be the smartest way to go. Because you got your, you got your warranty to repair, you're cleaning it every year, you're calibrating it every year. And that that was one of my questions is is when we started talking about this originally was, one of my concerns is the calibration factor of it because it does have to be done every year. It's mandatory. And just like the fit test is always supposed to be mandatory every year.
Absolutely.
So.
And if we don't, if we don't calibrate it, then if we ever get hurt, if somebody digs into the incident and it's not calibrated,
Yep.
I mean, we're we're gonna be fine. They said that it can take five to ten business days on the Port Account and send it in. I did not get where it goes, but it's here in the United States. We're just packing it back up, turn a shipping label, send it out. We pay shipping and then we pay return shipping. But I believe the return shipping is included in that that cost. If we do the bumper to bumper, then we just have to pay the shipment to the company to be calibrated. And that's only costing off for for five years.
Correct.
I asked them if we could do an additional five after that and.
What is the lifetime on these on these calibrators, all these called calibrators, that's what it is?
The Port Account, they say, in the factory tells you this, the lifespan of a Port Account is about fifteen years.
Okay, so then they said they wouldn't talk about an additional five years. But it's possible that, you know, if they maintain it, if they keep it up themselves, they've got the records of it, that we could extend the warranty, bumper to bumper warranty for another five and go from there.
That was my question too, and she didn't really answer. She's new in her position.
Okay.
So every time I ask her a question, it takes her two days, three days to get back.
But that would be something that I think I would look at hard is whether or not, if they have all the records, if they have maintained it, if they will extend a bumper to bumper warranty, an additional five or, you know, from from then on, whatever.
Okay.
Okay?
Absolutely. So that was the bid on the Port Account. And that's. From TSI. So the other company, I just got the other quote in on my phone that is from OHD. And he's not too far off of that price. So I, on the MES quote I passed out, the quantum fit two is the machine that I'm asking for and actually does the negative pressure test.
Correct.
He's quoted at ten five, but Dwayne has got it set at ninety eight forty four. And then the warranty package, the warranty that Dwayne quoted here that I highlighted for fifty five, they, it's basically the same thing that TSI did here on the Port Account. It's a bumper to bumper warranty for five years. They do the clean, cal and repair and then they also pay for the shipping. So when it's time to calibrate it, you call them up and say, hey, I'm ready for a shipping label, we email it, you put it back on the packet unboxed, ship it in, they pay the return shipping also. And with this this whole package, the fifty five seventy nine, that's guaranteed to be back in three days. But he says you're paying in quite a bit for that three day guarantee. Because if you can take ten days to get it back, the package is considered cheap. And that's what I was trying to find before I went in. So it's gonna be this new rate. So it's forty eight thirty. If you don't have to have it back in three days for the five year contract.
And we could arrange our scheduling and our testing that it wouldn't matter if we got it back in ten days.
So the so the company that you were waiting on the bid for direct?
Yes, I went direct to the company.
Do you think they're gonna be a couple thousand dollars cheaper?
He just gave it to me. If we don't need it, the the calibration done in three days, then the total price is fifteen three thirty.
Yeah, so it wasn't that much cheaper. I mean, he was actually a little more expensive than MES?
Uh, MES was seventeen eight. But again, that number has all those, all the adapters on it. So actually, MES was about a hundred and fourteen dollars more expensive.
That's good.
Yep. MES for just the machine.
Says fifteen four twenty four.
Yep.
For the two. For the two.
And then from the company is fifteen thousand three thirty.
So it wasn't, it wasn't that much cheaper?
It wasn't.
Yeah. By direct is what I was getting at.
No, I thought it was the house code.
Yeah.
Okay.
So do some, some departments need different adapters?
We do.
And is that what's on here?
Every.
And is it on here?
No.
Okay, so that's, these aren't included, I mean, on the other bid?
And then what did I present it to the fire chiefs? If we all did the same SCBAs, then we could ask for one or maybe two adapters in one. But we didn't. We all got, there's seven brands and we all got one.
Right.
So whichever department is responsible for that adapter, because if we put these in a bucket and pass it around, but we don't use this one, we don't use that one, something's going to get broke, lost or displaced. But if you keep your adapter information, you're not paid for it.
Which is basically like the three hundred and eighty dollars. Right. So really the price we're really looking at is this nine thousand, five thousand here on the MES one?
The MES one, the fifteen four twenty-four.
Yeah.
That's with the premium clean and calibrate package.
Right, okay.
But if we go down just a little bit and really, it wouldn't, we're basically saving a hundred and fourteen dollars to save, I'm not going to get it back in three days. I could get it back in ten days.
Yeah.
So we can coordinate whatever's in that.
And Pat would be, that would be her responsibility to, because it's going to be held, held in the trailer that belongs to the county. So really, Pat's coordinating that.
If, um, if you want to, do you want to keep it yours? But you feel it will be done?
I don't mind keeping it and making sure it's done. I don't mind going with it to each department. I mean, if I can call ahead and say, hey, can we, like, two or three departments meet here, get two or three departments meet here?
Like, one of the questions that came out last week when I gave the information to the other commissioner was, is our hall fire chiefs on board with this? Right? I mean, that was.
Yeah, definitely one of those questions we asked.
I did, I called him again and talked to him last week. Couple of guys did have a little reservation and it was more one-on-one. They asked their questions that they didn't ask in the night. But they were scared that we were going to say you have to force everybody to do it. Not everybody in the department has to do it. If the gas company, we had to do it to hold our job.
Correct.
And if you chose not to do it because you wanted to grow a beard or you wanted to do whatever, or you're post-apothecary, some people are, then they would, they would, you'd have to wait until they get their job. And I told all the chiefs, I said, same way, I got, I got a couple of guys that are really proud of their beard and they are not shaving no matter what. But they know that if there's ever a reason you need to put on an SCBA, they can.
Oh, really? So they, they understand that? So I think that would.
That was one of the biggest questions I had. If they, if it was, if they put on an SCBA because they had to go in support and they're not fit testing, what liability falls back on us?
They can't go in.
It, it falls on the chief.
Yeah.
So my rule is when I, when we sit down and discuss this every year, we've been going to Roscoe's, because they have Scott masks, we have Scott masks, they hit the machine in sunny county once a year. We've been going out and doing it. But when I collect my guys every year and I say, hey, and they say, I'm not shaving, no, I'm not doing it. And I say, okay, here's my question. If it's your house and your wife or kids, it's in the screaming, are you going to grab an SCBA and go? And that's usually what they're, they're kicking. And they'll shave. But if they don't, then I tell them, look, you're not wrong. Because to me, that's in the hot seat.
Yeah. Well, that's why I didn't know, we need to have a sign, some kind of liability waiver or stuff like that says, hey, you know, it's off, it's off of you, it's off the county, it's off everybody if they hook it on and they are not fit test.
Yep. Yeah, we can, we can make up this, I'll probably do a sign-in roster and everybody that has tested, that's what I do, right here, you sign and then I file it to the board.
Okay.
But if their name's not on there, their name's not on there. Unless they produce the sheet, they run them years and they got it.
Okay. But I, I was just worried about liability for us, for you.
Yeah.
So, okay. And who, and let me ask you this too, because I'm curious about this. With the, with us person something like this, is there going to be one person, two people that are certified to administer the test?
The, both machines are, you don't have to have a certification to it.
Okay.
Both machines, it's basically a YouTube video that you watch and then you're good to go. And both companies offer Teams meetings and Zoom calls, virtual setup and all that.
Substitution training.
Yeah. It was very even on both companies.
Are you familiar with one or the other company more than the other?
I have, I have personally fit tested with both.
Okay.
So I, the KSFFA has switched over to OHD and they're, they're happier with it. They go around the entire state.
Which is a negative pressure.
Negative pressure one. And OHD also does the apparel count and they do the same as the port account with the particulates inside now. But the OH, the OHD test was much faster. The one that I used, the port account, which is what the gas company uses, that's about twelve, thirteen minutes depending on how fast you're even. But this test was like a minute and a half.
Yeah, it seems to me that negative pressure obviously would be better test than the other.
I believe so because it's telling you that that match fits your.
There you go.
I watched several people test with a full beard and nobody asked, but everybody tried.
Oh, yeah? Yeah.
So, um.
I think for me, we've got to look at, at the funds that we have available and whether or not, I mean, we're going to have the funds to fund something like that. Is there a possibility that if we purchased the machine itself, that the departments would want to fund the warranty?
The warranty burden of it? So do you guys, are you guys leaning more towards the port account or the OHD?
I think the OHD.
Negative pressure.
Okay, that's, that's what I would recommend anyway. So it's basically going to be.
It's ultimately, will ultimately be included in that?
Yes, sir.
And we're looking at doing all the adapters too, correct? Is that what we talked about or no?
Fire departments are going to.
The fire department's going to be responsible for doing the adapters?
That way they, they hang on to it, they keep them, less confusion. So you'd have a total of eight or nine different departments.
So it'd be seven departments?
And all of them?
It'd basically be almost seven hundred dollars. That's not a big deal.
You think that's about, what do you guys think?
Do you think departments would go for that? Would they, would they want to fund that seven hundred dollars for the, for the bumper-to-bumper warning?
For five years?
They might, they're going to squawk. If I ask for a final, they're going to squawk.
Sure.
I don't know, I think Dilly would be fine with it because I know our budget and stuff really well. I don't know if Soldier, Nettawak and Wady. I don't know that the other departments would probably.
Could you, could you reach out to them and, oh, go ahead?
Well, I guess the point I would make with them, okay, how many of these masks, if we don't purchase any of this, how many of those masks do you have and what's going to possibly be calibrated just from this here? So White, for instance, they're going to have to calibrate it.
No, I asked them, I guess I didn't ask how many SCBAs you have, but like each department is probably going to have at least five or six guys.
Yeah.
And it's two fifty a B P?
Three fifty.
Three fifty five?
Somebody come in and do it.
Yeah, so.
So that's why they're not necessarily doing it every year. When, which if they make a five hundred dollar investment, they could, they could have it, they could get it done every year, no questions asked, there you go, and everything's done, they're up to pay.
I mean, for me, as a commissioner, I, I need to see if the funding's there. If we can fund the entire thing, great. If we can't, I just wanted to know if that would be an option.
They'll, they'll do it, but they're going to squawk.
I think we should just spend it all out of alcohol.
Because they're going to.
If we can't, I, I need to see what's allocated for this year out of there and make sure that, I mean, because this doesn't tell me that it is.
No, it doesn't.
Yeah. But I need to know what's, I need to know what's already appropriated out of that for, for the twenty, twenty-five year. Because I don't want.
Well, it looks like most of the adapters are average three hundred bucks. Some under three eighty, some under two seventy, you can use that on average. So if it's seven hundred to each fire department to take the warranty plus the adapter, that's a thousand. Three hundred.
So I guess for me, I'd, I'd like some time to chew on this and figure it out, then we'll, we'll just let it.
Let us chew on it, see where we can come up with the funds and see if we can do the whole thing or not do the whole thing. Because we need to, we need to look at the, we need to look at funds who are going to get allocated every year. But I, I mean, I, I think this is a good idea because it would bring our, it would give our fire units an opportunity to come up to standards like they should be every year.
I don't, the structure requires you just going to get the order. And I know I've been doing it every year, we've been doing it good. I did not realize the other departments. When I learned that, I was.
Yeah.
They were back in the past, but.
Yeah. But we used, we used to be able to do it in the department. You just put on this big green hood and you put banana oil on the whip kind of either and if they could smell it, they failed. If they couldn't smell it, they passed. And we used to do that. When it was chief signed off, they didn't.
Got money.
Hey, some, some of the old calibration tests.
Nope, I didn't spell it.
Yeah. So once the NFPA kind of.
There are no fingers. All right. Well, thank you, Chris, for coming up, for explaining all this, watching through it.
Okay.
We'll see what we can.
They, they will let you do a PO inside your unit, do a PO, because I asked them, you know, how can we pay? Because I know you guys like this.
We just run it through and pass the department, transfer them, or, I mean, just, we'll, we'll just get a purchase and take care of it, check it out. So.
Cool.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, thank you.
Yep.
Should we get money here?
Correct.
All new?
Thank you guys, I do appreciate it.
Thank you.
I appreciate your information.
Yes.
And you answered, you answered a lot of my questions that I had, so.
Cool.
So that's our.
Yeah, and that's, I mean. As long as we know.
So that's what I've allocated for the years.
Okay, can I?
Yes, we'll look down here a little bit.
Yep.
Uh, Jerika?
Hi, Jerika.
Hello, how are you guys?
Great, how are you?
Good. I just have to pronounce the quotes that I got, the actual books from the front and the shipping. Uh, shipping is on the back page. So I just have a purchase order to do record books and index books for the office to keep records for documents that are filed with our office and it's over that spending limit. So I just wanted to approach you guys with it. You know what I've got? I've sent out a request for quotes from three different people over a month ago and Navratz is the only one that gave me a full quote and they were a little bit cheaper on some things than the other places for the partial quotes that I got. So I decided to just go with Navratz because they've been more responsive and I got a full quote.
So the total, do you have a total?
Um, total would be with the shipping, five thousand eight hundred and eighty-five dollars. And that includes the three record books, the depth record book, the paper to go in those four books. I have two three-inch numerical record books and two four-inch numerical books and then the Rema paper that goes with that. So all of that with the shipping is just under six thousand.
And this is something you have in your budget, so.
Yes, yes. It's that one.
I didn't entertain a motion to approve the five thousand eight hundred and eighty-five dollars for, uh, Jerika's, uh, for this.
Did you make the motion?
I'll second.
Second. Okay, it's probably, the problem would be seconded to approve five thousand eight hundred and eighty-five dollars for the record books, paper and so on from Navratz. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Very good.
Thank you.
Would you?
Yeah, he's, he goes, um, I just promised not to be.
Did that, you need a chairman's signature?
Okay.
Yeah.
I just haven't heard the shipping on there yet. There, I just got the shipping over the weekend.
He might ask me if they can deliver.
Right, yeah. He's, he's up here all the time.
He's up here all the time.
Yeah.
He might would deliver.
Yeah, and I can ask him that and like so, I'll let you guys know if he does and we can knock that two hundred and twenty-five off of the shipping for sure. We're all right now, we grab it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good day, guys.
All right, Brittany?
Mark, I think, I think Chris had one little other comment to make before he could.
I just had a question and you can, you can talk to Brittany first.
Okay, okay. I, I thought, I thought I was going to give us. How are you?
I'm good, how are you?
What's going on, Brittany?
Good, um, I just, I wanted to come talk to you guys about like insurance issue and see if there was anything more that we can do. I sent you guys an email.
Yep, I read that.
Uh, so I'm a little frustrated that I'm not able to get off my insurance. I know I told you that.
And I'm trying to understand, Mary, come on.
I'm.
Go ahead. Oh, you do, okay. Help me understand. I, this doesn't seem logical.
Well, this is, let's go back to, this is Obama, this is ACA.
Okay.
Obamacare Act, so. The whole goal of the law is two-fold, one of them being that they're trying to get people onto health plans.
Okay.
And they also, uh, insurance companies are trying to protect themselves because they're having to make changes to make their insurance products compliant with what the ACA makes. So they're making, they're suddenly having to meet these, what they would probably consider higher requirements for their policies.
Okay.
And at the same time, the law wants to force them, force people into one of two things. They're either in a compliant plan or they're on the ACA marketplace. Right, so they gotta, they go through the government to get that Obama Care plan, okay? But the whole goal of it is, is that everybody's got to be on a compliant plan.
That's the goal and this is federal law.
This is the federal law. So everything's, so what they're doing is they're saying, insurance companies, police your, police your own. You cannot cancel somebody who is proposing that their current coverage is substituted by another coverage that is outstanding. I mean, and how that's detailed is by federal law. So I don't know if this is the case or not because I'm not privy to the details of the replacement plan, but it may be what we call an association. Technically allowed, but the other, the insurance company that exists that has your policy says that's not sufficient coverage under the ACA, then they're required to continue coverage.
I guess, I'm sorry to interrupt, but isn't it up to the individual to determine what's appropriate for the individual?
You think so?
You think so, yeah.
Well, yes. I'm not, I'm not firing at you. I know you're just interpreting the federal, federal law, but that just seems.
My question I guess is, so if I was like, if I was on my own plan as an employee and I would quit my job, I would immediately lost my benefits, right?
Well, if you, yeah, if you were on a plan and you quit, then, then you were the only one on the plan, yeah, you would be off and then you'd be expected to go, else you've got to go with coverage and then go off.
What would have stopped her from going to Farm Bureau then?
Nothing would have stopped her, but it, it just says that, well, at the time which she would, and I don't know how this, how this would work, but technically if they dropped her, then yeah, I could assume that that would, that coverage she got, if it's not compatible, if it's not, not sufficient, it still would be not sufficient. Because the, um, what they call the shared responsibility payment went away, it would have no effect. I mean, the real penalty of Obamacare was if you did exactly that, quit your job, you got a new job and you just didn't get insurance or you got your own and it wasn't compliant, was that you paid a tax. That was what was determined to be illegal. So in that situation, that was the government. That would, you would want to keep your coverage and go back and get on the family coverage because you would pay a tax. Um, so, I mean, the end result of this is, is that, I mean, I don't know again about Farm Bureau's setup, but something is saying to Blue Cross that their setup is not sufficient. Can you cancel that? Can you cancel the Farm Bureau policy?
Probably not, because I've already paid my premium.
Okay.
I paid a premium for three months to be paid by, because when they talked to, um, S H P, they had told us that as long as we got this letter from Farm Bureau, we'd have to be good, and I'd be able to get off, so I went ahead and got this insurance.
They've inquired about why they got, why they would get a, a ding from Blue Cross, and.
Well, they're saying it pretty much exactly what you're saying, is that, um, because they're not part of the Obamacare or approved by Obamacare, that they can't accept them. Um, but I guess what I, what I don't understand is that, like, I, I feel like it's because I was on a family plan that I can't get off of my insurance. And I, I, if I would have known that, I would not have done that.
Well, but you guys were accepting your insurance for, at no cost. As a family worked in the county, so that's automatic, that would put you to a family plan.
So you each individually had your own single plan when working for the county, is that correct?
We, I did, yeah.
Prior, because S H P would not let me put her on his plan because she was leaving an individual policy. They would not allow me to put them as a family when she came off. Does, do you understand what I'm saying, Todd? She did not have group credible coverage when she came in, they would not have her test policy.
Well, now, now, maybe I'm a trap in here, because I had understood from looking at it that this, the policy was a permanent policy.
It was starting January first, you had to renew it.
Okay, what was your date?
But when she first came on, she couldn't go on to.
On his, because I was, she was, she could not show a loss of credible coverage when she came on, because it was an individual policy. They're like, that's not loss of coverage, she's choosing up to renew it. So I had to put a letter up in her own plan.
I'm not, because you're mixing my timelines up, I'm trying to figure it out. At one time, it was separate coverage for the two employees.
She had her own, right, in twenty twenty-four.
And starting January twenty-one.
Twenty-five.
When was your date, your last day of work?
January seventeen.
Okay, so, right when it started in the family coverage situation.
January first.
Um, when do you guys come up for total, full renewal of the health insurance?
We do the renewal in October for a January first start date.
Okay, so you, in October, you indicated she was employed, family then came through, boom, yeah, so. Yeah, I couldn't, I mean, guess, I didn't do the research enough to know this, and that's, that's a problem, this, this is its own massive area. But, you know, it wouldn't be a guess that if, if she was on an individual coverage basis and canceled because she didn't work there, and they really aren't concerned about her family plan.
Is there anything that we can do to advocate on her behalf to get her off this family plan?
We tried. Like everything that we know.
Yeah, I think you, I mean, the only way you could, I think the one who's making this decision is Blue Cross for the most part.
Right.
It seems like, from what we're saying, they're right in the legal aspect of it. I mean, the plan you have now is not compliant.
What did their, what did their opinion, right?
What does that mean?
How can they say that?
Well, almost the only thing they're gonna accept is group credible coverage, because what they keep telling me, group, means it pretty much has to be coming through your employer. They're not gonna let you go get an individual policy on your own, by yourself, and go, here you go.
What they're saying is it's got to be backed by a big corporation.
Mm-hmm.
You can't have.
Well, is it, is it Farm Bureau Financial Services big enough for them?
Isn't a franchise.
It's, it's technically an individual policy, they have a group number, and what I was told by S H P, and not by Marion, Marion and Christie, I've been super helping.
We've been trying.
With them, at all.
Yeah, I, I.
Um, but what I was told is if they had a group number, we would be good. They had my husband, but of course it was on the phone, um, and he didn't even write, but said, if I got this letter and had a group number on it, I would be good. And so we paid the premium to stay on that plan, for me to on that plan. Then we got the letter and we sold it that way.
And will Farm Bureau send a letter staying to group plan?
They will, but they're also gonna cover their, and they're gonna say that they're not on, they're not approved by this Obamacare stuff. I mean, I understand where they're going with the people there, and so.
Yeah, I'm sorry you have to go through this.
I've even, I've even talked to.
Because the whole thing is, I mean, that she was employed, her husband was employed, was employed by the county, and it was supposed to be a benefit, and now it's like we're taking a lot away.
I also talked to, um, the county's insurance.
The county's not taking all that away.
Insurance. And they don't have jurisdiction over S H P. So they coordinated S H P as a complaint, but.
At the end of the day, it's probably gonna be a legislator, Roger Marshall, Tracy Mann, Jerry Moran.
They're, well, they're, they're helpful in the hands, they're helpless in the hands of an angry guy here, too.
They're helpless in what?
In the hands of an angry guy, they don't have, I don't think they can do anything, except, I mean, you can't change the status of the, definitely can change the status of this, your plan you have now.
So what if, what if her husband just drops his plan and says, I don't want my one, I want single plan?
He'd have to have a reason, he'd have to prove credible coverage for me to cancel his plan.
Well, cancel the family.
Cancel the family, and he's going to a single.
Right, they, but they won't let me take anyone off his policy unless they have credible group coverage. I have to prove they have coverage, they won't let me do that.
So he can't fly.
Todd, you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah.
S H P is a gatekeeper, I cannot make any changes to anyone's policy, I have to go through them to make any changes.
That's a.
And they're not gonna allow it.
This is, what you're seeing here is this is exactly how this was designed.
If Trapp, if, I don't know.
Ecidically as possible.
If your husband resigned his position, you would have a.
I could cancel the policy then.
And then if he got rehired, he could go under his single plan, correct?
Yeah, I don't.
I'm just trying to.
I don't know.
Trying to always.
I'm trying to tell my dad.
Yeah, that's, that, I mean, yeah, the problem.
I mean, technically, that would work, correct?
I'd say technically, I would not pass on that myself. I mean, that's just it, I mean, what does he, what does he go on? He's going, does it trigger Cobra, does he jump?
Well, I had an employee quit and come back within two weeks, and he never had a drop in coverage, I had to re-enroll him, because we insured at the end of the month.
And I, I also get the higher rate. Travis is strong, basically.
I'm just trying to transform the ways that.
He's worked super hard to get where he is, and I, it sucks, otherwise, I'm taking some, a big portion of his income because of me, so.
The only thing I can, you know, I would hate to say it, but at a certain point, State Farm's probably gonna step up.
Farm Bureau.
Farm Bureau, do they agree with them or not, too? Did they reveal that it wasn't compliant, that it wasn't covered? I mean, because they, they, they're selling you, I mean, or, at the end of the day, they're an insurance company, they sold you something that wasn't working.
I've had that before, honest, I mean, and that's what I work for now, with Farm Bureau, so.
Yeah, well, and that's what I'm saying, your employer ought to be at least a little bit responsible in this and say, you know, I can't believe this is not the first, this is the first time they've had this kind of.
But, but at the end of the day, that doesn't solve the long-term policy problem, because you're forced to stay on a family plan that you don't wanna be on.
Well, you, the, I guess, when we say the grace is you're not paying for playing at Farm Bureau. You're on coverage, you're just a parent of a county. The do, the reason why your coverage is cheaper is because it's a liability, it's an association plan, probably. And that means if you cancel it, you're, you're net negative, I guess, in the sense that you're still on the county's plan, but at least you're not doubling that.
I don't know what that.
I, I, I mean, oh, this is just, this is a nightmare. I know, I know what I would do, which is what we already discussed, that Todd said, well, probably isn't the best thing to do, I'd do that myself, honestly, I'd say. Come get.
I mean, those unintended consequences are.
Yeah, there could be unintended.
I'm playing it, so.
All those federal employees gotta be positioned, promoted, they're now probationary employees.
Yeah, we're, we're, for thirty years, not for probationary employees.
See, that's, that's why you gotta watch those.
Yeah.
Too fancy.
I, I, I don't, I don't know what to tell you, Brittany, honestly, I don't, it's, it's a.
Our hands are tied, I mean, because it's federal law.
Well, yeah, it's, you can force, essentially, by the insurance company.
Like the gatekeeper. Yeah.
Okay, well, I was trying to ask to come try and talk to you guys and see what else.
And I appreciate you counting on, like I said, I just don't, I just don't know what to tell you.
And the kids insurance.
If you're being taught, you get good.
They don't have any jurisdiction for the insurance commissioner, but, over them, everybody else should, so not everybody, S H P.
Exactly as it was designed to be.
Well, we'll figure it out, I just.
All right, and I'm, I'm sorry you're having to go through this.
I'll be here.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Brittany. Thank you, Mary.
Contract from the law, so we can drop off the job, like, pretty early, compared to the, uh, other ones.
We're thank, great.
That's all.
Thank you.
Yep.
Chris, what you got? Your wife sent you guys to put on your paperwork, basically, remember it for the planning of the committee? How do we apply for that? Apply to you guys, or? Uh, you're right upstairs, the sheriff's office, and she should have, uh, an application up here. Is that it? Just a lot of applications?
Yep. Then we'll, we'll do an interview.
They have a twenty-dollar guilty.
We'll do, we'll do an interview.
Goodness, well, he is still here.
Just a, just a simple, just face-to-face interview.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yep. Never done it, might as well try it. There you go, there you go.
Appreciate it.
All right, sounds good, thank you.
Do you have any other questions on the petition, right?
No, like I said, I think you answered pretty much every question I had, as far as calibration, uh, certification for somebody doing it, so, yep, you're good. All right, what do you see we can do? All right, thanks, Chris.
And let me know if you're gonna have, you have those meetings once a, once a month with your department.
Like, March is gonna be with the sheriff's office, and then April will be back with the fire, fire department.
If you want one of us to come to, like, quarterly? If you, if you think that's a benefit, I'm sure we can work that out.
Yeah, it's always good, the more communication we have open, the better it is, I think.
Okay, just let, coordinate it through BASH.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right.
So like the first, I'd say April, I'm on, just do one a quarter?
Yeah.
Because it moves around, that doesn't stretch me.
Sure, that's why I thought, you know, if it's up in this area, sort of home or whatever, maybe lending could go, or up north, wide.
Yep, okay, cool, all right, thank you, guys, sounds good, buddy, thank you, guys have a good day. Bethany? We're about two minutes early, but.
All right, I'll take it.
How are you?
So we've updated the diversion policy, which I told you guys about, and so I just wanted to give you guys some guidelines, or updated guidelines, just for your reference. Uh, and one thing we did discover was for all misdemeanor or DUI or traffic diversions that were being granted, we were not, um, being paid back for attorney's fees on diversion. Um, some attorneys would submit billing directly to our office, I mean, to pay them through the diversion, um, so the county wasn't actually getting any money back through.
Point of counsel.
Yes, for a point of counsel, so we have capped the misdemeanor and DUI attorney's fees to be four hundred dollars per case, and so we should be seeing that money on each case, um, given back to the county, which is good.
Okay, there you bring a little bit of help.
Yep, and then here's just the updated policy, which we did post on our website as well, so it's more accessible. And then, uh, we are having a victim, um, rights and resources presentation with the AG's office. Um, their victim coordinator, Tiffany Askew, has agreed to come present, um, four hours for us on March eighteen, here in Memorial Hall, so we reserved Memorial Hall, um, it's gonna be for legalistic kinds of attorneys, uh, and so our office is hosting that, and other prosecutors in the second judicial district have been invited to attend if they like, it's gonna be free. Um, so I just thought I'd let you guys know about that as well.
Thank you.
And that's it, that's all the updates I have.
So things are going well, you're settling in?
Yeah, settling in, and it seems to be more of a, um, attainable pace now, which is good, so I've kind of burned, um, the season, which is fine, and I'm getting a little officious, if you say things, and that, so.
Thank you, I appreciate you.
Yep, appreciate you, thank you.
Yeah.
Mark's quite good, I'm gonna take that.
Yep. Take a little recess.
Who's the one that's who discussed that meeting?
Yes.
Hey, why can't this, I could do it, can't I?
Yeah. So you're sure?
You knew that?
Hold on, that's what I, I don't know.
No, we're gonna face.
Don't you, it's, it's more. Is this the only one, since Scott did bring it, did you have to assign it? Okay, we have payroll change for the new gentleman out at River Bridge. We've already passed down a thank you note from, um, Jackson County Minister, well, I believe it was.
Yeah.
Thanks for our donation. Uh, we have a letter here from Morpheus County Environmental Services, uh, about their yearly ask, and that, as I stated earlier, they're not going to ask for more this year, it's another, it's ten thousand dollars to get this year for, uh, for the five counties, so pass this down. Oops, sorry, have a meeting, a motion on that? Okay, because it's just appropriations, okay. And that's already been done. And here's another from the, from our mail department, water. So we must have one here somewhere. See, they spelled orange candy wrong. There's an E on the other. Maybe he wants to check it, it's still in the mail. Well, so we got anything on it? Did you see it?
I didn't, I had everything on my desk, it just was all.
Unless, unless I missed it, I don't see that we have a, uh, anything in the county on it this time, so. Unless, unless I missed it, I don't see that we have a, anything the county honored this time, so. Um, that's us. Call up, have him take over, that's annoying what that is. And we have a tax maintenance here.
Is this something we're supposed to post somewhere, though?
We did that same thing, you looked at it every week, we got one, that's just the water.
Okay.
Water quality things from the state's hands, but like I said, I didn't see any Jackson County on there, so.
Okay.
Unless Tom DeHaas or Goff has something down in Jackson County, but I don't think they say that.
It says same old county, okay.
Yeah, I'm not seeing one, we haven't had a Jackson County on there, oh, there's. Let's see, Rossville, so, okay.
Right.
Jackson County, Weiner Farms.
Typically, Christie, the alcohol revenue based on past, we get it once or twice a year?
Quarterly.
Quarterly, so what, what was last?
Well, when Christmas and New Year's, I, uh.
Like, can you just run a printout of last year and I'm sure come today?
Sure.
Each time maybe.
Yeah.
And I'd like to discuss our night meetings, too. We go ahead and hit that then.
Okay.
I'm, I'm kind of in favor of putting pause on those for right now. Number one, I get word to anybody there. Number two, I've got board meetings that I've gotta go to on the first Monday, I got one night for the board of Kansas. Help, and we're increasing those board meetings from once every quarter to once every few months, so that's gonna put a strain on me there. So, you know, I kind of like consensus of board to see about putting a pause on the night meetings. What's your, what's your input on that, I guess?
I'm in.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with it.
Okay.
Well, not fine with this, like, shot up.
Right, so we'll get that posted on the website, so that everybody knows we're not gonna do them right now. Yes, what, what's that?
There, there was just a foreclosure action, since the county set taxes on the property, they named the county. But a sale of property in the sheriff's sale, they would pay the taxes current, when they, when the bank buys it essentially.
Okay.
So there really isn't any harm to the county, it's just, eventually we'll get to a point where they'll sell the sheriff's sale and pay the taxes current over that.
Is that why you see the county named in suits like this, because I've seen those, I've seen it in paper, but never related to why?
I, I, I did foreclosures for a long time, caps in the bank, and that's, we always, if you knew that there were taxes owed, you'd name the county.
Okay.
And then no matter.
Name the county as the board of county commissioners?
Yeah, board of county commissioners, and that's why that is, it's just basically saying, Euro taxes to, you know, to account for you guys, and if you guys have anything, we're going on, tell us.
Okay, well, that makes sense, then.
Yeah, so, I mean, I'd still like to get those, but, you know, nine ninety times out of a hundred, I don't wanna answer, and I won't do anything, Jake, I can call him up and just say. How you doing? And it says here, basically, that the order is gonna have an order of sale, but it's gonna pay taxes.
Okay.
So.
Perfect, all right, thank you.
And I got through those documents you talked about before, so we want another exec session to talk about that, probably under ten minutes.
I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session for attorney-client privileges, possible litigation. For ten minutes, starting at?
Eleven eleven.
Eleven eleven? Still moving.
Second.
Been properly moved, and seconded, going to executive session, attorney-client privileges, the board, Christie, and Todd. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carried. I'm sorry, I'm not giving you a chance to read off your shirt.
It's easier to say.
Nobody's complaining.
Hmm? It stinks. Um, did you have a plug in the back? I mean, it's untwined. No, it seems like really.
We're getting questions, I think we've got them all answered.
Uh... We've got to run the talk of the season.
The tax date set?
Not yet, no. We're getting a lot of calls.
Probably after that was in the paper, so.
Yeah.
And people want to know when it's going to be.
Well, so I'm really having trouble. Uh, you know, does that, let's see. So what? Sorry. You guys batted down hatch, alright?
Alright, thanks. Don't blow your head on tomorrow.
Yeah, don't get blown away.
We'll see you later.
Thank you. Have a good one.
Oh, you know, I do know that the midstates check came because Lisa, I asked Lisa to keep watch for upstairs. I think I want us to turn it in. Room bridge must have turned in Friday.
You know, what, uh, being like...
I didn't ask her, she just let me know that it came. I thought, I forgot that, I thought Scotland is in there.
That's good.
That's right, right. Yeah, right, she sent me a text and said, "We're about it."
So, what, uh, what, what funds look like, have you looked at those or...?
Okay, so, yeah, we have, I think nineteen, twenty thousands of change left in two eighteen. Line item, two eighteen. Once everything that's appropriated comes out. And it looks like I'm trying to... Let us just understand this correctly, is that four to eight?
Yes. So, half to March.
That's a quarter, right?
That's a quarter, I guess.
Looks, that's the hundred pounds from...
From what she's expected to come in.
Okay, okay, so, yeah, I think we easily knew that I'm two eighteen.
I do too.
Okay.
I think we just as well do all of it.
Okay. I would agree, so I'll, I'm sorry. Stephanie, if you, I would make a motion to...
From MES.
I'm sorry?
From MES.
No, I think he wanted the other one, the OHD.
He wants the OHD because he said that was going to be...
The back is the one that had the, um...
He wants this one, the MES which is this one, which is a negative pressure one.
Yes.
Oh, okay, the MES was, I thought, I understood.
The OHD is who actually manufactured that.
OHD.
Okay. The MH.
He got bid through OHD and OHD is still in Miami.
Okay, that makes sense then.
I'll, uh...
We don't have the, we don't have the actual bid from OHD, he had a lot of stuff, so.
I would make a motion, we purchased the, um, Quanty Fit Two for nine thousand eight hundred and forty-two dollars ninety-eight cents, and the gold service contract for five years, and five thousand five hundred seventy-nine thirty-six. Total of fifteen thousand four twenty-four thirty-four, um, for Jackson County to own, and all fire districts in Jackson County to use.
One second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and psyched that to purchase from MES, uh, Quanty Fit Two for nine thousand eight hundred and forty-four ninety-eight. The gold sar- service contract, which is basically a bumper-to-bumper ordering, and calibration for five years for five thousand five hundred and seventy-nine dollars and thirty-six cents, for a total of fifteen thousand four hundred and twenty-four dollars and thirty-four cents. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all of those, same sign, motion carried. Perfect. And you've got the confidence correct, okay.
We'll just need to let, uh...
Chris know, Chris. Actually let Pat know if you never called Chris and tell him that it's, it's a done deal.
Go ahead and give it a whirl.
That way, kind of like getting finished up.
Chris is the one who did all the research on the radios. His MOS when he was in the military was radio technology. So he's, he was very helpful in that.
And so, and so what does he do now?
He works for the gas service company.
Like I say, he did answer all my questions that I had about calibration service and things like that, because that was a, that was a big concern for me, uh, going forward. So, I'm, I'm happy that he came in and was able to answer this.
Yeah. He's good fire chief.
Do you guys have an evaporator too?
No, just the machine, the, each individual entity is going to be responsible for purchasing the evaporators.
Yeah, 'cause I, I thought his point was good that, you know, they all have different ones, and let them maintain and take care of them.
I still wish there was someone who figured out who brought me, how you saying that is?
Yeah, it's wrong.
It's just like, you have insurance, they can all find, all of the law.
I agree, well, can you tell they just say that she asked for that insurance and she has this?
No.
Well, now it looks like support.
I don't think Todd called me in, I think we called Heather. Oh, okay.
On the minutes February fourth, down here in the, uh, three, four, fifth paragraph, where we saw Sergeant Scott came over, uh, down about halfway, it says Chairman Pruitt suggested that an anti-gel solution be added, should say be added into the graders, and that should also say when they know the temperature will drop below zero for an extended period of time. Because the sixty, forty blend is good to zero to five above, something like that. So, but if we do know that it's going to drop below zero for an extended period of time, we can go ahead and add that in.
Okay, so I have Chairman Pruitt suggested that they put in anti-gel solutions into the graders when the temperature drops below zero to respond to extended period of time.
When they know the temperature's going to drop below zero, yeah. That's the key right there, we know it's going to drop, and then... Okay. Uh, then on the next page, we're talking about the fit machine, fit tester, uh, down about quarter of the way down a page. Chairman Pruitt asked us to double-check this, and then make sure there isn't additional charge in reference to the warning. Shouldn't have been instead of that. And drop down two more sentences, uh, three more sentences. Chairman Pruitt would like to make it mandatory that all are, all be fitted. Would make it mandatory if used that they all be fitted. And I think she explained that there, and Chris explained that there, that, that is what would happen anywhere. Perfect. That's all I can get on that. Is everybody ready through the minutes?
Working on it.
Okay, let me know when you're done.
Hi Judge.
What's up Judge, how are you? Making a living?
Another one.
Is this a mustache kind of thing?
It is.
I'm wearing half on you, ain't I?
Something like that.
He thinks you're going to get upstairs, thought I'd let you know.
That's good.
We got two interns, they're being trained.
It's kind of cute, it's that tall, he's so cute, I find I know where it's older than he is right now. But it's good to see the next generation coming up.
Yeah, I, I really like, uh, her idea of bringing interns in and start getting trained. I think that that's going to be, like I said, can help the next generation get up, keep going, and hopefully, uh, continue on with them when they get up in positions like...
No, understand when they're done with me, they're going to thank every judge like me, and for a sad awakening.
Understand.
Yeah. But no, one of the ones. Good.
That is great, that's what we like to hear.
'Cause I know I came down here before when we were overwhelmed, but we seem to have gotten over that one.
Good.
Still busy, I'm getting... Still a lot of cases. Still a lot of cases. But very, very massive this time.
Good.
And what I mean is, third, a while back, like a year ago, it was when we had a hundred and seventy-eight cases to take. Right. You just can't dispatch justice to a hundred and seventy-eight people.
Right.
For six hours.
Yeah. Well, and Bethany came down and did, uh, told us, you know, change your personal program, things like this, so... It's a step in the right direction as far as I can see.
Yeah. What do you think, I'm hipster. I do like cuff links. I've always had the cuff links, that was kind of my thing, and I decided to step up my game, I'm going to be the cuff link best of the night. And if I need to step it up, I'm going to be the pocket watch, very similar box.
There you go, you're going to play Sheldon Cooper then, right?
Yes.
I actually have, I've got, still hold my jewelry box, will you?
Well, the best thing about cuff links is, back in the day, these probably were horribly expensive.
Oh yeah.
Now you go to an antique store, it's like two and a half, three bucks, that. They probably have somebody a car payment back and forth.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, exactly.
And, uh, I go on eBay where I get most of mine.
Yeah.
And there's this lady, Victoria Flynn. She made ceramic cuff links in nineteen fifty's. And they were all high-end. And back in the fifties, it probably cost a hundred dollars, I get them for like ten. If you put that in nineteen fifty dollars, I'm not paying tenses.
Yeah, easily. Well, I still like tiebacks and tie clips too, you know?
Yeah, so do I, but I don't want to wear one with the vest.
Yeah.
The only thing I don't like about the vest is it covers up the...
There you go.
I want people to see me. That's like when I was in the army, I wore blaze orange, I wanted to get a bit of suit.
Yep, yep.
In fair form.
Exactly right.
Let's see, what else is going on? My daughter's going to graduate college in May. No, it means I'm getting really old.
How old are you?
Take a guess, can you tell by my hair?
I'll take a guess, I'll say you're fifty-five.
Higher.
Higher?
I'm sixty.
Oh, well, you're still a baby.
I like to think so.
Are you still a baby?
Yes.
Yeah, you're still a baby. Let's see, when, when's your daughter graduate, she graduated?
May eighteenth.
Yeah, when she graduated high school?
Four years ago, so...
Ten years early.
Twenty-one.
Yeah, so you would, yeah, so Marcus would have been, yeah.
What's sad is sometimes I look at, when I have court upstairs, and people have graduated with my kids. So you never made it out of the hole.
So what's she going to do?
She is, she's got a great communication with, emphasis on journalism. She's going to lose money when I graduate.
She's not going to be a YouTuber, right?
Pardon me?
She's not going to be a YouTuber, right?
No.
Okay.
But her hobby, she just sits up and writes out scholarship applications all day.
There you go.
She makes a fortune, it's just like, you know, if you're stupid, you can't apply for those anymore.
Yep.
My son, he's going to start, he's finished his first two years of GANs, and now he's going into nursing school with a wife. And what's great about that is he's a CNA. He got to do his first real live dead body, not real live, if, if somebody that actually died with him being present. You couldn't pay me enough to be a CNA. That is hard work.
It is. People, people scoff at it, but yeah, that is a, that is a hard profession to be in.
But I think it's a good way for him to start out in nursing.
Yep.
So he knows what they're doing.
I know several nurses who that's, they, they worked their way through high school at CNAs. They got their CNA and, and worked at the nursing homes or, uh, care homes, and that's how they got through high school, then hit college running, so...
Well, I worked my way through working as a lumberjack, really motivated me to go to college. Oh, did you really? I grew up in northern Minnesota. I never know, I've never been to some towns that never know. Okay. Actually, I was a, I was a state champion whale skinner in Minnesota. They used to have a lot of whales in the Great Lakes. Remember I said used to, I was that good.
So, did you, did you do the log spinning and all that good stuff?
What?
The log spinning?
No, that's, that's, that's like a rhinestone cowboy. It's just like, you look at him, just like, I'm a lumberjack, there is no need for me to ever stand in the middle of a river and spin on a log. What, what's the purpose of that?
Yeah, that, well, that's kind of my thing, what was the purpose of that?
Just chop the tree down, okay, that's all we need to do, that's what I get paid for. If I'm out in the middle of a river... If I'm out in the middle of a river spinning on the log, the first thing that somebody that's my supervisor is going to say is, what in the hell are you doing out in the middle of a river spinning on a log?
I had a rough night.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll move that we pass the minutes from February 28th and February 24th with changes.
Okay, so we're probably moving second into adopt the minutes from February 24th, February 28th with changes. Any further discussion? Hearing done, all in favor say aye. Aye, I'll close same side, motion carried. All right. Here's that quote from Sam Sarah. So the GPS and the cameras, are we going to do the cameras right off the bat or we're just going to do the GPS?
I'm sorry?
Were we going to do the cameras right off the bat or just the GPS? I thought we were just going to do the GPS right off the bat.
No, we talked about doing forward facing.
Cameras, okay. I didn't know if that was going to be our second phase or not. I didn't give them shots first. There's that. Quote for that.
So did you ask Karen if the server was on this phone? She was supposed to be finding it. She was asking if there were issues with her service.
Because of the updates?
Hey, Dr. Phil, Dr. update, somebody want to talk?
What if they don't run the update?
Then you get behind and bad things happen into you? Case in point, the, the software that we use for calibration tracking at Goodyear. They used it for several other things also, but it was a, I use it for calibration tracking. When we were going to switch over to the new one that we went to, they couldn't switch over for like six months because they were so far behind on updates that it took them that long to run updates to where they could finally switch over. It was, it was not pretty. And you know, the reason he wasn't behind not running updates, well, just didn't have time to do it. Also now we got time to wait six months. So that, yeah. And is this the new server that we just got put in or, didn't you just get a new server put in last year?
I got a new server up here.
Okay. That's a different server, okay.
And so is this basically the dollar amount that they talked about at the beginning, you know, start?
They didn't really talk about the dollar amount at the beginning, I believe, for the cameras, cameras and the GPS.
I think GPS was maybe 10.
10 and then so the cameras, the quote here is for 15 something for the first year and 15 something for the second year, so. And that's licensing and everything included. With 30, I believe I saw 32 GPS, eight forward facing cameras, so, eight forward facing, is all it says.
Eight, yes. But okay, so why is there a difference in? That's got 10.
License for vehicle gateways, power assist gateways.
Let's see, like up here that says 10.
Vehicle gateways, yeah. That says no cost on that.
Okay.
Oh, that's hardware accessories and then this is licenses here, you got that for licenses.
So it just kind of, well, it's hard to show, I mean, we don't know where.
What's that?
It's just a, I guess, a, there's a signature.
That's just a photograph now.
Just a photograph, yeah. You don't know. Okay, right.
We've not searched anything, yeah.
Okay, that's what I thought. So why would the internet itself give you some such?
It's not, it's not, but I have to ask them.
I think it's just our Bell server they had upstairs, didn't it? I believe. I think that's what, now, and we need to, we need to talk to Bethany also because I believe that that was what she was talking about. She wanted to get off of our server and that one upstairs for just then. Well, isn't that what she was saying? Do you remember that? Isn't that what Bethany was saying? She wanted to get off of our server down here and get on her own upstairs for everything?
I don't remember.
But if she did, if she did, then that would make a, make a difference in.
I don't think they would want to do like you have, but I'm going to go back to you.
Oh, the other one's now?
No.
Computer. Oh, oh, okay.
Who is?
I think that might have been where the server should have been. Daytime. But that's the case that we have to go through. Because he's not getting online.
I'm not sure that's. Multiple reasons. I'm just not sure what's.
I don't know if they have security. I don't know anything about that stuff.
Too many different things.
Right, I don't want some of the. It's kind of weird because some stuff that people drop off is super dangerous.
Yeah, that's probably.
Because that's what I'm trying to do with this one last time.
That's probably possible.
Okay, I mean, Paris, I'm watching all the, it doesn't need to be a time, it's four minutes, I'm going to go by some way. But I think we are still. Yeah. No, it was suggested. Is there a question? They want to do a question. We see that it's. Yeah. Question. All right, thank you. Joe, do you want to come back to? I want to go back to.
She's going to come up here, what?
Gee.
We're going to have to figure out this. I mean, we know that was still.
Yeah, every time, yeah.
Mark, you said something about first year and then the second year payment.
Yeah, people get on the bottom.
What is the second year payment for?
I'm assuming just to update the licenses.
I guess I'd like something to set out because first year, first year payment, so sort of breaking it into two payments, so over $30,000 for all the hardware and all the licensing, or are we doing $15,000 annually?
That's what we need to find out.
Yeah, because I'm not in favor of that.
That's, I don't think that's what we're talking about.
First year payment.
So that's one of the things that we'll need to ask Scott to get some clarity on for next week.
I mean, I'd need to know, I.
Yeah, oh yeah.
Typically a license, so when I purchased my cameras, I paid one time fee for that license for that camera, but it's a lifetime.
Some of them are lifetime, some of them aren't, so we just got, we got to find out what that is and what that entails.
I can't imagine.
I mean, you have to renew your, renew your licenses on some of them, Norton, if we renew your license annually?
For updates.
But you still have to renew your, you still have to renew your Norton license for your antivirus and all that, you know, clean more software. That's not a, you buy it and you're forever.
But a license, typically the annual license sales tax for a day. But a license is different than a subscription or like Norton's antivirus or something like that. I just need to break down, I guess.
Yeah, what, what rest you're getting for that?
For 15,000.
You want to reach out to Scott, have him get ahold of them and break that down?
Yeah.
Yeah, because being the beginning here too, I mean, it's almost like there's a payment every year, so.
Because are we just leasing the equipment?
Yeah.
For that?
Yeah, because see, that's the total of these licenses. I think it would go down more than that, and that's what we do. Including a license fee for the Sam Sarah software associated with our, to be paid annually beginning on the license start date. And if applicable, a one-time hardware cost to be paid upfront as of the license start date. And these are payable by recurring wire transfer, all transfers made. See, I think you pay it every year.
Do, what is that annual payment though? Okay, so what's the hardware?
So, the hardware shows nothing.
Right, that's what it says, so they're saying license, license, license.
The dollar per licensing.
I can't imagine I would pay that.
So see upfront, yeah, upfront. Yeah, and then even sort of the next year. And if you're paying with user, the licensing fee goes down every year. That's all about.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I'm sure there's not another, something for that. Argument?
What was your date for me? I'll stop. Kirk's not coming today.
Uh, just put it in the back.
So we split, we're in over two, next to all this and traffic. I don't see when she texts me, but I'm a joke, I told she had to call you. And she said, and I said, did you talk to them later, and she said, we haven't talked about it. So I'm pretty sure.
I guess look at the emails personally sent.
The, uh.
Cases, yeah, we need to read those.
A lot of misinformation.
Okay, so I have an email here from Ripley. So it says, would you be able to clarify for me, if I would have been on my own policy, could I have quit and not have been made to stay on the insurance? I really feel like it was set up incorrectly, and I don't want to blame Mary at all, but I feel like I should have never been on a family plan. If she would have left me on my own policy, like I was, prior to January 1, I don't think I would be having this issue.
I don't think she could have been put on her own, because she wasn't an employee, correct?
Well, she started out on a single policy, but with the family policy set the way it is, we will not be able to have on policy, because it's children.
Sure.
And Mary didn't understand what she was doing.
But not, not knowing that.
She was, she was going to quit the next, in, within three weeks of the, in Roman Curry closing, but. I don't see.
I was gonna say that more than likely, if she had adequate coverage, she would. But I don't know if there are adequate coverage for me.
It's, it's.
I don't know what would be.
The term, uh, what did Todd say, it's, Farm Bureau doesn't rate it as a.
Well, the, whoever their deed keeper is, doesn't rate it as a burden, right?
Well, Farm Bureau doesn't rate it as a burden either.
They have a group number, it's a single clause.
But when she came back to work here, and it was a new hire, and we put her on our insurance, if she had been on as a single. And we still would have just left his the way it was, with him and the kids. And then when she terminated this time, then she would have been fine, because she just would have been a single and terminated.
I think so.
It would have been okay. I mean, she does have a point in what she's saying, and yet, and yet, we put her on a family because it saves the county money, which makes sense.
Anyone else, yeah?
I know, but.
I, I know what you're saying.
But you don't know that, and you hope down the road that doesn't.
I know.
Create a problem somewhere else for somebody else, it's just, it's happened this time.
So we, we put people, we take people from the two single clients, if they both work here, and put them together and have a family? But we don't charge them anything for that family?
The single gets, the single is paid for by, by the county, right?
But a family, is it?
Two sing, two singles would have, no, two singles would have cost the county board.
I understand, what I'm saying is though, if you force somebody to a family plan, now they have to start paying versus each one of them having their own plan.
But see, it would then is covered.
The family plan.
Yes.
Thank you, that ended my question.
But, I mean, I get what she's asking.
But, but we have a bad circumstance where.
They still have to pay.
Because otherwise he would have just been him and the two kids.
Right, and then he would have to pay. Don't call me resentful, I'm a doctor.
Which is not as much as a family plan.
But what they're having to pay out is $8,000 now, and yes.
Name it.
She has a little drop off that thing.
See, it's.
What did it cost her for the three months of?
I mean.
I think, I think she got a little bit of a hurry by.
But I think she thought if she did that and her letter would take care of it.
I would back Farm Bureau's.
I think that's why Travis was told, was if she had a letter stating she had group coverage, then that would suffice, because we thought it was all taken care of.
I would, I would request a letter from Farm Bureau stating it is.
Group coverage.
Yeah, and then present that, that's what I would do, otherwise I'd want my money back. Farm Bureau's insurance is actually pretty good, my daughter used it when she was in the ground school, she had to walk the bars and, and have something. Might, you know, cost her like $60 a month. And have insurance.
Oh, that's cool.
Yeah, so see, I don't know how to answer her here, because she does have a point. There's, there's two sides to this whole thing.
But there's, there's no liability of our, you know.
And what did Todd say? Does Todd, she has that in mind. And talks us something about if that coverage is a problem. If it's a coverage they won't accept, you can't be in that global care house, is what I understood. And granted, I do not understand insurance, that's all the question to say that.
Ooh, yeah.
Is Mary not in there? Can I talk to her please? Thanks.
Yeah, I mean, I feel terrible, but I don't.
No, that's just it, because I, I, um, I'm saying, in my respect.
If.
She had been on a single, she could have walked away.
So the issue is, I'm saying, she doesn't. All right, thank you. Okay, so she would have had her own policy, and she totally, if she had ever repeated it, that would go in, that would be in that, she would have a long way to go.
Right, see. And so, has anybody actually, can, I mean, have you completely explained the whole situation to S H E, S H B?
Yeah. You have that time involved in it?
So he has tried to.
We need to try everything we can to help. I need to listen to you every day.
That's, I just don't know, we're all together, I mean, our hands, our hands are kind of tied, we don't really think we can do, definitely. What we, of course, yeah.
I, it's, it's, the only letter, they're, they're gonna have to follow the law, and if they're not gonna, this does. She just, I would go back to Farm Bureau and say, I need a letter, and your letter is saying. It's group coverage.
And if they're not gonna do that for her, then I, I would ask them to refund her premium for three months, so that it wouldn't have to be double payment or something, or not be used. That would be my suggestion, I mean. It's, it's a no-win situation all the way around.
It is, because she didn't want to have to pay the family premiums, but.
And I have one more.
I don't either, which is good.
Yeah, that's what it costs us. I say, you would have had children anyhow.
What did she, you think, that?
She worked for her.
Oh, sure.
So I'm gonna ask her, I'll spend $6,000 more on the patient. That's just a guess.
Now, like I said, I'm, I'm, I don't know what we can do to rectify the situation. Because our hands are kind of tied, so. I think we've done everything we can do.
Okay, can you get this situation to somebody else?
I'm sure we could, I mean, we could, we could, we're all in that, maybe this. I'm not a force.
Janelle and, Janelle and Steve.
As far as, there used to be at least four of them, of course, and that is. But, yeah, I mean, we do, we fully be in that position.
All right. Is there anything else today?
I don't know.
Linda?
Yep.
Christie? All right, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
It's up to you.
Second.
Been promptly moved and seconded to adjourn the meeting today as a further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carried, meeting adjourned.